Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the October 27, 2025 regular meeting of the Birmingham City Commission. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Bingham, roll call, please.
Mayor Treyslaw?
Here.
Mayor Portemballer?
Here.
Commissioner Emmerin?
Here.
Commissioner Hague?
Here.
Commissioner Host?
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Long?
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you. So, City Manager Jana Ecker and Assistant City Manager Mark Clemmons are both away this evening at the International City Managers Association Conference. Assistant City Manager Melissa Fairburn will be orchestrating this evening's meeting. But Jana Ecker, as you can see, is, oh, you can't see, I can see, she is available online, and she will be auditing the meeting and will be available for comment if need be. So with that, we will go to Proclamations, Congratulatory Resolutions, Awards, Appointments, Resignations, Confirmations, Administrations of Oath, and Introduction of Guests and Announcements. We have an announcement that the City Clerk's Office reminds all voters of the upcoming local election on Tuesday, November 4. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Voters who plan to vote in person on Election Day are encouraged to review the city's new precinct and voting location map, as our precincts did change. Early voting is taking place now through Saturday, November 2, at the Bloomfield Township Library and at the Waterford Oaks Activities Center.
You said Saturday, it says Sunday. Sorry.
Excuse me, now through Sunday, November 2. Thank you, Commissioner Emmerin. Absentee ballots can be requested by mail through the end of this week and in person through 4:00 p.m. on Monday, November 3. The city has absentee ballot drop boxes available 24/7 at Fire Station Number 1 and on the City Hall grounds. Voters can also visit the City Clerk's Office this Saturday, November 1, 2025, for any last-minute voter registration or absentee ballot needs from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. More information about voting and the upcoming elections can be found at mi.gov/vote and We now move to appointments. We have one candidate for the Architectural Review Committee, Mr. Benjamin Modle, who was so kind as to return and apply for this committee. So, Mr. Modle, just, we all recall you were here before for the historic district, but please tell us why you're interested in the Architectural Review Committee.
Probably sounding like I'm repeating myself, but resident of Birmingham the past 16 years. A wife owns a dental practice in Birmingham, registered architect in the state of Michigan. I work at Smith Group downtown Detroit. I just want to get my toes in the water, get my toes in the water with all this stuff, and I think this is a good position for me. I live and breathe design and architecture. Spent my life professionally for the past 17 years. I was trained via academia in Philadelphia and trained professionally the past 16 years, 17 years at Smith Group, so, yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Modle?
Yes.
Have you reviewed the information in the packet on the creation of a committee?
I read that, yes.
That's all I have.
From 2004, I believe, yes.
Would any Commissioner, Commissioner Long?
Thank you for coming back. Thank you for volunteering your time. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Benjamin Modle as a regular member of the Architectural Review Committee to serve the remainder of a three-year term to expire on April 11 of 2028.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you, congratulations. Ms. Bingham will swear you in.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You can stand. I do solemnly swear a firm oath of support of the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this State and the government to be very routine and efficient administration, be fair to Birmingham, free from partisan distinction of control, and perform the duties of officer of the Architectural Review Committee according to the best measure.
Thank you.
So, second time's the charm. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now move to open to the public for matters not on the agenda. If you'd like to make a comment, you're in the room, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, hold your comment to about three minutes, and if you'd like to make a comment and you're online, please use the raise your hand function, and we will unmute and call on you. Are there any public comments this evening for items that are not on the agenda? I see none in the room and none online, so we will move to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and approved by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered under the last item of new business. Do we have any commissioners who wish to pull any items? Commissioner Hague?
Jay Juliet.
J.
Commissioner, Mayor Portemballer?
Aye.
Aye.
Any others? Does any citizen wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none in the room and none online, so we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items I and J.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any comment on the motion?
Ms. Bingham, roll call, vote. Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Commissioner Anthony Long?
Yes.
Mayor Treyslaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Portemballer?
Yes.
Commissioner Emmerin?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
All right, in the order in which they were pulled, assuming that the commission wants to handle these now, Commissioner, Mayor Portemballer, aye.
Aye. I pulled aye because this is important to the community, and I thought it merited some report from the city administration. This is about the Village Fair. There were numerous letters of support, and so I'm hoping to hear from city staff on how this is going to go. I believe we have at least one person I saw in the audience from the fair. Several. Okay, we have several, who may, may want to speak to it.
We'll start with Chief Groody.
Good evening. Just to update you on the fair, really nothing's changing this year from last year, other than a little bit of movement in the setup due to some construction next year over by the church at, by Chester in the corner of Chester and Martin. Due to that construction, it's kind of pushing things back a little bit. In terms of our deployment, number of officers, that's going to remain the same. We had at peak time about 17 officers working the fair Friday and Saturday evening, that's with our auxiliary officers. So in terms of coverage, that's going to stay about the same. The only thing that's changing in, I guess, the cost is, is that we are billing out the costs beyond the fair hours, because we are requiring officers to stay due to the crowds that stay within our downtown, stay within the park. So the way we bill that out is increasing a little bit to cover the cost of the officers to stay for that additional time. Outside of that, really, nothing operationally is changing. Last year, we had great cooperation with the fair organizers and with the chamber in terms of the hours of operation. The chamber actually came to us last year during the fair and suggested we closed early. If you remember, we had an option built into the plan that we could either close at 9:00 or we would allow them to extend till 10:00. It was their choice to close at 9:00 on Friday evening, and that stayed through till Saturday evening, and we did the same thing. This year, for the application, the closure time is 9:00 for every night on it. That's about all of the changes.
There was a discussion last year about access or egress, let's say, and how we were going to get people out of the park when the fair was over, and there was some discussion of maybe one night we did it right, one night we did it wrong, or I don't really recall.
So...
But it was not wrong. We didn't do anything wrong.
None.
There was a better way and a best way.
Good, bad, and bad.
So what we did last year was, and what we've done in previous years, is once the fair closes, we try to empty the park out, because we have a bunch of personnel we're trying to send home. So we're trying to cover what we can and get the large crowds out of the fair area. What we found Friday night of last year was that crowd never left. So what we did on Saturday was, instead of pushing them out into the downtown, we let them remain within the park with the fair closing and just encourage them to, it was time to leave and kind of go about their way. That way, we didn't force everybody into one particular area. Everybody kind of spanned out and went in different directions, so that seemed to work better.
And that's what you'll do?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And my other question is about, you said that there was a change in what you're billing for. You always billed for a certain amount of...
The way we charge out the overtime...
I'm curious about the numbers and...
Yeah, the way we charge out the overtime was, in the past, it was specifically for the fair hours. But because of the crowds that remain within the fair and throughout our downtown as a result of the fair, we're increasing that cost to include the officers' coverage beyond the fair hours, since the city was incurring that cost in the past.
So I guess my concern there is, kind of like, where do you draw the line? A lot of things we do in Birmingham draw crap, draw people, whether it's, I'm not, the art shows draw people, and people, you know, when it's over. So I guess I'm just concerned about the fairness of that. I'm very curious about the number. Like, what is, what is the, what is the cost going to be? Is, are we talking about a minor amount of additional money or a large amount of additional money proportional to the revenue generated by this event?
So I don't have those numbers right in front of me. I believe it's in the packet with the application and what the police department was going to charge out for that. I don't have it in front of me to give you the exact number on it.
I believe it's a 35% increase over last year's cost.
And is the chamber acceptable? Is that acceptable to the chamber?
I mean, we're happy to pay the fees incurred. I'm Kelly Bennett, the Operations Manager for the Birmingham Bloomfield Chamber. Danny Houston, owner and operator of North American Midways, here with me to also answer questions. I mean, absolutely, we want to continue having the fair, and we want to do what's in the best interest of the community. It is a challenge, obviously. It says our largest fundraiser, so a 35% increase is a challenge, but something that we're hoping to, to make work.
What does that mean, make work?
I mean, it affects our bottom line, obviously.
So what is the 30, what is the whole dollar amount?
I believe the city is charging us just over $35,000.
That's the new number?
In total, yes.
Yes. Commissioner Baller, the police charge is 24,521.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we discussed last year, it ended at 10:00. The police force wanted it to end at 8:00, and I believe we decided on 9:00. Now, based on the number of reports, shouldn't we be considering ending this at 7:00 or 8:00, because that's little kids' witching hour, so to speak?
Is that a question for me, or would you like...
No, it's a question, has it been discussed? Why is 9:00 going to be done again when, in both cases, both nights, it was quite, quite amazing, the police reports?
Would you like to...
So, last year, we did have several incidents, not nearly to the severity that we did the previous year, which brought the discussion on a timeframe. To be honest, I don't remember a year that we had the fair where we didn't have incidents. Unfortunately, it kind of comes with, with that type of event, that we have those type of incidents, when you have that many kids in that type of area for those events. As you know, a lot of these events have been closed in other cities because of the assaults and stuff that have been happening. I think when I was here two years ago, two years ago, when we talked about it the first time, I was not in support of closing it. I think this is a great family event. I just wanted to bring it down a little bit earlier so that we could try to reduce the number of incidents that we've had. While we did have a couple last year, I think overall it was a success. I think the majority of the event was a safe family atmosphere.
Okay, so you're not going to push for 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock?
No, I think 9:00 o'clock was a good timeframe, and obviously, we can close it earlier at any night that we deem necessary if incidents arise that would require us to close it, or if situations arise where we feel it's not safe. We certainly would always work with the chamber and the fair to close early based on those conditions, if we thought that existed.
And it seems like providing the additional policing after the fair closes helps, you know, continue to control the event. Commissioner Hague first?
All right. So Commissioner Baller kind of brought it up, and that's why I corrected him to better and best, because we heard about Friday night, I think I spoke to you. I went out there on the Saturday night just to watch, just to test the temperature, and definitely, definitely different on Saturday, definitely very well controlled. What I was going to say was, one, two things I remember from last year. You need better loud hailers, and can we get some spare fencing? Because I think that was one of the other things, we're trying to block off areas. There were officers were kind of standing with their arms, like, no, don't come this way. If we could actually get some extra fencing to just put across those exits. Those were the two biggest takeaways I took from Saturday. Other than that, I thought it was done very well. I just wanted to say, that part of it about Saturday, clearly, there was a revised and improved plan that worked. And so I leave it to your judgment. I didn't want to pull it, but if you pulled that, I just wanted to say it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
I'm very much in favor of us continuing with the fair. I attended the fair when I was seven years old, and I'm old as dirt now. It's been a long, long time. And, you know, the city of Birmingham has always stood out as a city that makes things work and makes the effort. We have an excellent police force. I think you guys did an amazing job. The videos of the couple of incidents that happened show that you guys were on it within, like, less than 30 seconds. And so I am very much in favor of it. My point is, is not really when it ends, it's when it ends that it's the problem. It can be 7:00 o'clock, it can be 9:00 o'clock, it could be midnight. It's when people leave that we've had these incidences, and it spills out into the street, into the outside area from, and I think last year, you had police officers on, you know, at least every corner, there was one of the, one of the corners that had, you know, two police on, and that's what we need to focus on, in my opinion. It's when the people leave that we have these problems. I don't really think we've had many incidences actually in the fair in comparison to those outside after people are leaving. So the fencing is a great idea, and I think there was a discussion last year about limiting the way people could go. For example, blocking off the southwest corner and having people go, you know, southeast and maybe, I don't know if you're going to be able to do it this time, because, but maybe go northeast, but not have people spilling out all over the place so that we can kind of control more with the police that are outside the area. So I'm, I'm not so much concerned about the end time as I am about that. And I think if we tackle that, and I think you did, I think your officers and you did an excellent job, and I think that, you know, there's always room for improvement. And as far as, you know, the extra police costs, unfortunately, that's the cost of doing business to get, to keep this going. It just, it just is. It's not something that we're jumping up and down about, but it's the cost, because the alternative is, is what other cities have done. Berkeley, Orchard Lake, they just stood with their hands up in the air and said, we're not doing it anymore, and we don't want to do that. So we appreciate you partnering with us to, and obviously, the police force, to make this as safe as possible. But anytime you have hundreds and hundreds of people in a small downtown area, you're going to have a few bad apples, and I would really appreciate not having a few bad apples spoil an event that has been around here for many, many, many years.
Ms. Kucherek?
It's in the manager's report, but I think it's important to note that of the multiple arrests that the police department made over the course of the Village Fair, those who were legal adults have all pled guilty to their respective charges as charged. There was a message sent last year and again this year that there's no negotiating for criminal charges that occur during the Village Fair. Three adult teenagers pled guilty to assault and battery, one adult teenager pled guilty to open intoxication. Of the three juveniles who were arrested, one for assault and battery and two for disturbing the peace, all have been successfully petitioned to the juvenile courts.
Thank you.
And thank you for that, by the way, because I mentioned that last year, that we need to send a message that we're not going to play around. We will charge you, and we will not negotiate, and we will, we will take it, we will, and that's the reputation that we need to have, so that when people come here, they realize that they either behave or they're going to be arrested.
And we can thank our prosecutor, Tracy Gonzenzi, with working with the chief to make that happen.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Baller?
I neglected to, again, disclose a minor business relationship that a company that I own has with the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm doing that. I don't believe it rises to the level of requiring recusal, and so I...
That is true, that we've discussed this many times in the past. Thank you for disclosing.
All right, so any further comments from the chamber or from you, Mayor Portem, before you make the motion?
No, I'll move the suggested resolution.
I'll second.
All right, roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Treyslaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Portemballer?
Yes.
Commissioner Emmerin?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Commissioner Anthony Long?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hague, item J.
All right, this one's actually a really nice one. I just really wanted to highlight the fact that we are planting a lot more trees than normal this year for various reasons, because we do hear a lot from residents about the trees, tree coverage, tree replacement. The list of species is quite long. It's nice to read such a variety, actually. And then, the only other thing I would say is, I just want to remind us all about, there have been a couple of different petitions asking for a tree committee, and not to discuss that, but just to highlight, we do pay attention, we do try, and if, if, big if, we do decide to have a committee, there is a precedent for us actually trying to do, do what everybody wants anyway, so that would just be a supplemental. That's all. It's just, it's very nice to see that much replanting, which costs us money, but it's worth it.
342 trees. So would you like to then make the motion, Commissioner Hague?
Yes, make a motion to approve item 5J on the consent agenda as written.
A second.
You have a motion, a second. Any comment on the motion?
Roll call, vote, please. Commissioner Emmerin?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Commissioner Anthony Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Katie Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Portemballer?
Yes.
Mayor Treyslaw?
Yes. Thank you. All right, we move to the city manager's report, which will be, city, Assistant City Manager Fairburn will touch on some highlights.
Yes, so as always, the manager's report is a wealth of information about the goings-on in the city. I'll just highlight a few things quickly for you tonight. From the Baldwin Public Library, they have many events running that are appealed to all ages as a community members. One I'd like to draw attention to is the Idea Lab Retro Expo, and that is the weekend of November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, and it gives people an opportunity to play vintage games, so bust out the vintage technology. Moving out to the Birmingham Museum, it is the last chance at the end of November to see the transportation exhibit, and after November 26th, they will close down and prepare the Allen House for celebrating Birmingham history is everywhere, which exhibit ties into the nation's 250th anniversary. The Birmingham Shopping District successfully had their last farmer's market of the year yesterday, and they look forward to seeing you on Sunday, May 3, 2026. Tomorrow night, from the Building Department, we have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting that, that board did not meet in September, and the three cases from September will carry over into tomorrow night's meeting, that is 495 Vinewood, 270 South Glenhurst, and 309 Arlington. Clerk Bingham, already with the announcement that she put in the front of your packet, highlighted the importance of our upcoming Election Day, and as a reminder, don't forget to check your voting precincts, as the city consolidated our voting precincts in the past year. From the manager's office, you have your quarterly update of GovPilot concerns, which is always interesting and informative to see, and the top three that we got in the quarter were about construction sites, potholes, and then city trees. So in all three of those types of cases, we have staff immediately respond to the GovPilot request and go out and review what is going on. From the Department of Public Services, probably the most exciting announcement from them is that the playground installations have begun. So earlier this year, the commission had designs for the West Lincoln Wells site and Pump House Park to review, and the installations have started and should be completed sometime in November. That's it. And the installations have started and should be completed sometime in November. All right. So the fire department actually has a couple of exciting pieces of news. The first being that they were awarded the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. And that money is $264,000 plus. And it goes to the replacement of the department's self-contained breathing apparatus. It's a federal grant through FEMA and it was a very big deal for the city to be awarded that grant. And in more good news, Battalion Chief Chris Deman graduated from Staff in Command at Eastern Michigan University. And not only did he graduate, but he graduated top of his class. And the interim chief and former chiefs were there to see him graduate. Just very quickly, because I don't want to miss anybody, this month we do have one staff member who has been with the city for over 20 years, and that is 21 years, and that is Adam Bous of DPS. He's a street sewer water technician. And some more news from the police department. In September, the police department had a meeting here at City Hall where they invited representatives from all the houses of worship in the community to discuss policing issues and safety issues within their congregations. They also have some outreach, such as the Donuts and DEX event. It was the first ever in town where one of our officers led mostly youth in skateboarding at our skate park. And finally, from the parking department, the APC had been exploring the size, like a size recommendation change for the Peabody garage. And after a lot of creative discussion, landed on something that they could all agree to, which is to restripe all the parking stalls to be eight, eight feet wide, which is better than it was, not as wide as some of our more luxurious spots in town. But through creative thinking and collaboration, we're able to find a way to restripe the parking spot so as to not lose any spot in the garage. And that is it for the October report, but there's a lot more in there and I would encourage the public to read it.
Thank you, Ms. Fairman.
Madam Mayor. I think it's worth mentioning that our police chief, Scott Gruy, got the distinguished alumni award from Ferris State University.
He did indeed, and I believe the city also put that out on social media. And congratulations, Chief Gruy. All right. We now move to unfinished business, which is a public hearing for condemnation of a dangerous structure at 611 Elm Street. I am going to open the public hearing and we are going to have the staff presentation. And I opened the public hearing at 7:59 PM. We have Building Official Jeff Zilke and Mary Kucherik, City Attorney.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jeff Zilke, Building Official for the city. I just want to recap the package that you have. You have a full board package with the photos of the addresses 611 Elm, which is AKA 635 Elm Street. To kind of recap the timeline, this thing's been ongoing since January of '24, when the DPS was notified of a pipe leak burst, they went out there to go shut the water off in there. And in, when they got in there, they realized, let me go to one photo on the inside, that the building was in disarray, a lot of mold in there, ceiling tiles collapsing, which they informed us at the building department to the former building official Bruce Johnson, in which they notified code enforcement and they did a site out, exterior site visit, and we go back in here, start bouncing around a little bit, of the building. They walked around the outside, there's a few more photos in your package. And they then notified the building owner of the condition, wanting to get in. On the 16th of February, there was a conversation between the code enforcement, Patrick Bozinski, and on February 28th, a notice went out stating that they wanted to get into the building for a site visit. The site visit then on the interior was on May 16th of 2024. Just go back to a few of the interior photos. You got a few more photos within the package. Kind of go a little bit fast. Thick condition on the inside, carpet was tore up, ceiling tiles falling down, water on the ground in buckets. And then through this, there was conversations with the building owner for the neighboring development to actually demolish these buildings. So hence, kind of the time lapse up and fast forwarding a little bit to July of this year. There's been, you know, it was kind of noticed, but noticed that the conversation and the negotiations of the neighboring development kind of ceased. And then we kind of put a little bit more pressure on the building owner to move forward with the, the plans of demolishing the building, which then brings it to July of '24, 2025. A letter was sent out in correspondence to say, hey, this building needs to come down. It's non-inhabitable. And then I'm, sorry about this. It was non-inhabitable, then there was talk that they wanted to kind of, they said it was structurally sound, they wanted to repair. Had a drone fly over and it got some of the upstairs, the roof photos, the roof is caving in at this point. So fast forwarding from a year, the interior photos were taken a year ago. This was, these are photos taken in October 14th of 2025. I know it says 24 on the slide, but it was in '25. The ceiling's falling down. And if you can kind of see, this part's right here on Bowers, the ceiling's falling in here. There's a close-up of it, ceiling's caving in. So structurally sound of the building, so we're actually looking for the owner to move forward with demolishing the building. And that kind of concludes my presentation. If you've got any other questions for me.
Ms. Kucherik, would you like to add to the staff report?
I will add that there's been numerous notices given to the property owner citing that this is in violation of Birmingham City Code ordinances as it relates to the property maintenance code. And it was cited at section 115.15, which has been adopted by the city in its entirety as well as ours general ordinances regarding dangerous structures. I think what's important to note is the language that says that the building or structure is neglected, damaged, dilapidated, unsecured, or abandoned. So is to become an attractive nuisance to children who might play in the building, or structure to be dangerous, become to harbor for vagrants, criminals, or immoral persons, or enables persons to resort to the building or structure for committing a nuisance or an unlawful act. I think when we look at all of these photos, I think it's very, very clear that this is exactly the state of this particular building. I will also note to the commission that there was a time when the owner agreed to demolish this building and two more of the buildings that he owns that are not part of this action. And that when he couldn't strike the financial deal, he was hoping to with his neighbor, this sort of fell apart. We gave probably more time than we should have because we were hoping that the property owner would take care of this dilapidated, dangerous, uninhabitable building himself. Unfortunately, since he has not, it's necessary to bring this now to the commission pursuant to our ordinances. I should also tell you that I have received a few phone calls from neighboring persons, including a lawyer who's nearby, asking when the city is going to act to take down this dangerous eyesore, that he feels that it, the particular attorney, I won't say his name because I don't believe he's here, or he may be here to speak on his own, but he didn't give me permission to relay his name. That he is concerned that his property value and the neighboring property values are certainly going down as a result of this, of this property.
All right. So that concludes the staff presentation. If the applicant is in the room, you are welcome to come to the microphone and make comments or a presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alan Applebaum. I'm the attorney for Mr., my friend and client, Mr. Ralph Ferranzo, who stands behind me. He is the owner. And behind him is Mr. Greg Winborn. He is a mold and remediation expert and will address the commission. We had two structural engineers review the property. And while they both recognize the problems inside the building as are shown by the pictures and by Jeff's presentation earlier, a professional engineer by the name of Michael Wise has issued a report. I have numerous copies of this, if I may. I don't know if you want one copy to pass around, or I'm not sure how you want to handle it, Mary. Should I give one to you? And then I have one for, maybe you can pass it around, would be the best way to do it. I'm going to read from the third paragraph. It's not too long. Lopez Engineering's, this is after they talk about the problems, but Lopez Engineering's opinion of the structure is that it can be repaired and is not required to be demolished. The interior contents of the building can be cleared out. The wall finishes present within the structure can be removed. And any mold or mildew can be mitigated and removed from the structure. The exterior masonry walls can have all cracked joints chipped out and the mortar joints can be re-tucked pointed. Finally, the damaged roof framing can be assessed and repairs can be performed. The roof can be sealed and a new roof membrane can be applied to the entire structure. These repairs will provide a weatherproof structure and then the interior finishes can be installed and the building can be utilized. The structural repairs required for the building will not be extreme or elaborate. The foundation and the exterior walls are all in good condition and could support all imposed loads. The removal of the mold and the mold and mildew elements within the building and the roof repairs shall provide the necessary enclosure of the structure. The complete demolition of the building is an extreme measure and is not required at this time. This is executed by Michael Wise, a professional engineer from Lopez Engineering. We also have a 21-page report with pictures from A and A and D Enterprises. And again, I'm going to read the very brief part. For this Phase 1 report, I conducted a walk-down inspection of the interior and the exterior of the single-story building with peripheral block masonry walls with flat roof and wood frame construction on the inside. I found the building to have extensive damage in the interior of the building. I did not notice any major cracks in the block walls and no telltale of problems with the foundation of the walls or roof leakage. Goes on, on page 21 of this report to say, it is my understanding that it was a water pump, let me back up. Based upon my field inspection, the information provided to me, my engineering judgment and my practical experience, I believe that there is no imminent threat to the public at large from collapse or failure of the structure. And that's signed by a Mr. Anand, who is a professional engineer. And I can, it has significant pictures, but we have two structural engineers who say there's no, I'll call it imminent danger. I'd like to present Mr. Ralph Ferranzo, who's the owner, to advise the commission of what, of his position on the matter. Can I pass this one around? If that's okay. Mr. Ferranzo.
Hi, I'm Ralph Ferranzo, owner of 611 slash 635 Elm Street. So this all started when I called to shut off, to, to request for the city to shut off the water to the building. So they, they did, I think it was in around '22, 2022, or a little before that maybe. And then the, the next thing I know is someone from Fred Lavery called me and said that there's water coming out of your building. So when the water department came back out to investigate, they realized that there were two water lines going to the building. I bought this building in 2017 from James Elsmann, who I think is pretty popular with the city of Birmingham. So, so if you, if you listen to Jeff, Mr. Jeff Zilke's statement or what he just reported, he basically mentioned, and the truth of the matter is, and he basically said the same thing, was that the, the, the ceiling tile is dropping, the walls are moldy, the carpet needs to get changed. There was absolutely no mention of the structural, how structurally sound the building was other than the roof. I agree, the roof has collapsed, so roof has joists. I'm a builder, by the way. So I know a lot about, a lot of things when it comes to building. So the roof has roof joists. Yes, from one roof joist to the other, it needs immediate attention. The roof needs to be repaired. But the rest of the roof is sound. I've had, I did not, I do not have a, I did have a couple of roof companies walk up there. Royal Roofing, Lutz Roofing, which are very popular roofing companies throughout the country. And they said that it was sound and they didn't give me a report on time. I can provide that from them. But the only part of the roof that needs to be repaired is in the, in the picture. I think maybe 10 feet or so. So, so, so the city's declaring my building condemned. I don't agree with it. So I hired an engineer to do an inspection of the building to determine the integrity, integrity of the structure. And he did give me a report. And I took the liberty also to get a second opinion from another engineer. The first engineer was Anand Enterprises, I believe. I think he, I think my, Alan passed that report out to you. The second report was from Lopez Engineering. Do they have that? They have Lopez Engineering to inspect the, the building. There's nothing wrong with my building. The building is structurally sound. Does it need attention? Absolutely. It needs to, it needs to be gutted out to the bare block. That's what it needs. It is structurally sound. There's nothing wrong with the walls. If you drive by it, you don't see walls dilapidated. There's no cracking in the walls. It needs to be gutted out to the bare block. The finished walls, the ceiling, the carpet, absolutely needs to be gutted out. I bought it from James Elsmann and it absolutely needs maintenance. I have called Jeff Zilke about a month ago and asked, can I just go in and gut it out? His reply was, well, it's going to commission. I called three, four months ago and talked to Barowski, I think his first name is Pat, asked the same question. He said, let me check with, let me check with his boss. I'm not sure what name he mentioned, but he said, let me check with, and get back with you. He never got back with me. I called back in January or February, talked to Suzanne. She works in the building department and left a message twice from Mike Murad. He never got back with me. The water line broke and flooded my property. I got a bill for $1,200. I called and I talked to Janet Eckert about it, the manager, she knows me. I talked to her and she mentioned to go talk to the head of the water department. I didn't get his name. I'm sure she'll remember. I'm sorry, I don't have his name. He never, I called and left a message, he never got back with me. So I'm not getting any return calls here. So my, my main, my main objective was absolutely, does it need attention? Absolutely. Does it, have I, I didn't know, I, and I made these phone calls because I didn't want to hire the company, which is, which is part of, the gentleman behind me is part of gutting it out, gutting, you know, gutting everything out of the building. I didn't want to hire anyone and order the dumpsters just to get stopped by the building department. So I called to try to determine if I can go in and remediate it. So I think, I have two reports from a structural engineer. And they clearly state that the building is structurally sound. I'll be more than happy to get another independent, if Birmingham wants to choose a company to walk through the building. And there is, there was asbestos. It was already cleaned up by the asbestos contractor who's standing right behind me, Greg Winborn. As far as the mold, he remediates mold also. I can let him speak if you have any questions, or if you have any questions for me.
So the commission does not ask questions during the public hearing. This is a public hearing where the public gets to ask questions of either the staff or you. or you. So if you have any other comments you'd like to make, any of you or your representatives can make them, and then we'll ask whether there are any questions or comments from the public.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Roger Winborn, Metro Abatement, who's doing the asbestos and mold remediation.
Good evening, Roger Winborn. I've been in the building. We did the, we did a survey on the building, environmental survey, to determine if there's any asbestos in it. We did find some. We did remove it. The mold in there, yes, the building needs to be gutted. Can the mold be treated? Yes, we do this every day. Is it something that is uncommon for us to do? No, actually, we've seen a lot worse. But can we go in and remove this? Absolutely. The council will let him, you know, permit them to have this demoed out. We can, we can be there as soon as next week.
Thank you. Any other remarks?
Yes, we'd like to respectfully request an opportunity to make sure that Jeff here is, we can do some work, get Jeff's approval and get it done, make the building respectable so it can be ultimately a good, a good building for the city of Birmingham. We just need a short amount of time because he just hasn't had, one hand hasn't been watching the other, and that's the problem. We're, we're here today to show good faith. My client's a good citizen, and we respectfully ask that the commission deny the request to demolish and give my client an opportunity to fix that, fix that building.
All right. Do any members of the public, either in the room, you gentlemen can be seated, in the room or online using the raise your hand function, have any questions or comments for either city staff or for the applicant and his representatives? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your question. Okay, I see none in the room. If you're online and you'd like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand function. I see none online, so I am going to close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission. Do the commissioners have any questions for Jeff Zilke?
I don't know, Mr. Zilke, no.
No. Any questions for Mr. Zilke? Commissioner Host.
What's your feeling that, you know, these gentlemen are talking, that they have been thwarted by left messages? Do you think we should give them another chance?
This thing's been going on for two years. There's been demo permits in and approved for the three buildings, the two other buildings that were not part of this condemnation. There was talks with the neighboring development to get these buildings down and removed, and it kind of all halted. And to move forward, the condition of the building, it's in bad shape. I mean, can it be repaired and a new roof? I mean, is it structurally sound? You can see the block in this picture right here. Blocks have been falling off of this roof. The roof has caved in in a couple spots in the front and also in the back. My opinion, it's not very structurally sound, and there's a lot of work to do on the inside to mitigate the mold. That's been sitting, these photos been from a year ago, and now with the roof being opened up with all the rains we had in the last month and a half, I wouldn't feel comfortable walking through that building. And I think moving forward, there is demo permits in it. That was the plan, and it just kind of halted and it's just being installed. I think moving forward is the way to go.
So Mr. Zilke has, I read the entire packet. There are numerous notices that were provided, legal notices. The Anand report that was circulated is from 2024, so that it's, it's a year and a month old, and the building has certainly decayed more since then. I understand Mr. Ferranzo saying that he left messages, but did anyone appear in person at the desk to try to pull a permit or understand the permit requirements for remediating the building?
Milford Contracting had pulled demo permits for 635, 611, 870, and 880 Bowers, the two other buildings on Bowers. There was talks, and then it just kind of stopped, and it has, it just kind of got stagnant for a while. And I know back in May, when they did go on the interior part of it, this roof, that was a year ago, and then at some point, this roof has collapsed, and that other report from '24, the structural report, we have not seen that. And it's just getting decayed more and more as it goes, as time goes on.
All right. Commissioner, questions for, if there are no more questions for Mr. Zilke? Do you have any?
Yeah. Mr. Zilke, when did Milford come forward with the demo permit?
I don't have that information. I know it was probably, probably eight to 10 months ago.
Okay. That's good enough.
All right. Questions of the applicant by the commission?
I would like to ask questions of Mr. Ferranzo, if he could come back up, please. Hi, sir. There was a notice of violation that was sent out on February 28th, 2024. Did you receive that?
What did it state?
Did you receive a notice from the city on, of dated February 28th, 2024?
I don't remember. What does it say?
Okay, so you don't know whether you did anything with regard to that or not?
I can't remember February 24th.
Okay. There was a notice of violation of demolition of, for structure unfit for human habitation sent out on May 20th, 2024.
Yeah, they wanted to condemn it.
Okay. Did you receive that one?
Yes.
Okay. What did you do in response to that?
I called the city to, like I said earlier, I didn't, I didn't agree with demoing the building because there was ceiling tile falling and the walls, structurally, I thought the building was good.
Besides calling the city, what else did you do?
Well, I didn't get a return call. What do you want me to do?
Did you come to the city? Did you come to City Hall?
No.
Did you come to be with anybody?
I called several times, though.
You called several times?
I actually called Jeff a month ago and talked to him.
I'm not asking about a month ago. I'm asking on May 20th, 2024 or thereabouts. What did you do in response to that, other than calling the city?
Well, okay, let's back up. So, so December of, around December of 2024, December, yeah, December of 20, you asked Jeff a question about when the permits were pulled. He mentioned eight, 10 months ago. It's actually, I believe, December of '24 is when Milford Contractor pulled the permits. I believe that was it.
The notice of violation I'm talking about is dated May 20th, 2024. December is a number of months past that. I'm asking about, other than calling the city, when you received the notice on May 20th, 2024, what else did you do? If anything?
If I remember, I talked to Milford Contracting and hired him to look into demoing the buildings.
Okay.
And then he, and then we were in the process of demoing the buildings. I wanted, actually, at that time, with what I had going on, I had some investors that wanted to come in and put up a structure. I've been through the planning department to get like 90 apartments approved. So I did have an investor at that time. I own a lot of real estate, so this is not my only little building that I own. So I did have an investor. He backed out. I decided not to, oh, so I, I got the runaround a little bit from Mike Murad. I was ready to demo it. I went forward. I was, we were all ready, and he said that you need to get a red, like, I think, a mouse or rat report and put some boxes out there to catch all the, you know, the mice or rats or whatever. And I did that. That, that took about 30 days or 35 days because the boxes have to be out there for 30 days. When I went back, I believe it was in October again, he said, oh, well, we need to get a, we need to, when I had all my ducks in order, he said, then he was going to schedule to disconnect the water line. So where they, the water department needed to go out and dig everything to disconnect.
Is this within the May 20th, 2024 timeframe that I asked you the question about? Or is this just generally?
No, I mentioned that I responded to it by hiring, hiring Milford Excavating to move forward to demo the buildings.
Okay. And then you received a notice of violation, final notice dated July 15th, 2025, a year later, correct?
What day was that?
July 15th, 2025.
Yeah, and I called, I did call Pat Borowski and asked him if I can, if the city would entertain or having a meeting so we can, I can come in and talk, so I can gut the building out. I don't believe it's a candidate for.
Did you come to the city anytime between May 20th, 2024, July 15th, 2025 to meet with anybody at any point in time?
I didn't have an appointment.
Okay. All right. Did you attempt to make one?
Yes, I called, I didn't get, I called, like I said, Pat Borowski.
Okay.
He didn't return my calls.
So you didn't think that if you called and then you didn't get a response, that maybe you should maybe come to the City Hall and talk to them?
I called four different times, sir. No one returned my call.
Okay, now it's four times?
Yes, I just stated four times when I came up.
And then?
I called Mike Zilke a month ago, and then Borowski three, four months ago in July, I believe it was. And then I called in January or February, just like I stated when I first came up here. I called about four times. No return calls.
And then there was a public hearing that was held here. I was here then on September 2nd, 2025. Did you attend that hearing?
September 2nd?
Yes, of this year.
I was called and said that, oh, September 2nd, there was a hearing?
Of this year, there was, there was a notice of public hearing, September 2nd. Did you come to that?
What was, was it on my building?
Yes.
I never got noticed.
Okay. And then there was a public hearing also here again on October 8th, 2025.
October 6th, I believe.
October 8th. Did you come to that hearing?
October 8th, so I, so I got two different notices to come. One was at 4:30. I gotta let, I might have it here. I had a letter that stated that I had to be here 4:30, and then I got another notice, the little card that said 7:30. So when I called Jeff Zilke and brought this to his attention, he said, really? Email him to me. I emailed it to him. He canceled the meeting.
I can clarify that.
Yeah, please.
There was a notice for October 6th. The meeting was at 4:30, and there was some public notice. There was an issue with the notice. So that's why it got postponed on the 6th until the 27th.
Until tonight, yes.
And then the Lopez Engineering letter that you just handed to us, what's the date on that?
Do you have it in front of you?
Yeah. What's the date on it?
I don't know. There's no date on it?
It's today.
Oh, yeah. He gave it to me today.
He gave it to you today?
Yes, but he did the report a while ago. I found, he was, the reason why he gave me that letter is because he was supposed to attend tonight. So he called me up last minute, says, I can't make it. Let me get your letter.
So he, he did an inspection in August 6th, 2025?
Yes.
And you got a letter from him dated October 27th, which is today?
I mean, respectfully, did you not understand what I just said?
Respectfully, did you not, do you not understand what I'm saying?
He was supposed to be here tonight, and he canceled, so he gave me a letter.
Okay. So this has been going on since February 28th of 2024. We're almost, we're almost.
There's a lot that's happened since then.
There was a lot that hasn't happened since then.
There's a lot that's happened you don't know about. Let me, let me, let me say, it's not relevant to this meeting, but I have to say it anyway. My house burned down. I was caught in the fire. My daughters got stuck in the house. I went in and got them. I ended up at the burn center. I've had a bad year, and I have pictures to show it of my burn. I got all burned up, saving my girls. I don't, I'm not expecting any pity or remorse or anything, but that's what happened. I had a very bad years, physically and mentally. My daughters got stuck.
I don't even.
And I got them out.
Commissioner Haig, do you have any remarks or Commissioner Emery?
So, no structural problems, right?
No.
I can see over 100 square feet of roofing that has collapsed, which means that there's adjacent structure that has also risk of collapse. I'm looking at open tops of block, blocks inside the building. You talked about your personal life. I'm looking at those blocks next to a street, which is next to businesses that I go to. How are you going to bring back my kid when a block drops on them? You can't. You can't. You have no way of doing that. There is zero recourse. Someone gets injured because of this, there is zero recourse.
That's not all my fault. I've contacted the city several times to see if I can repair everything.
Do you own this building?
Yes.
You mentioned that the issue with the water started in 2022, I believe, yes?
Yes.
So you've had three years and nothing's happened.
I've called the city, like I said, and then it gave me a response. Are you putting any value to that?
I put value on it. I also put value in follow-up.
I called the city several times to go in, and I own many buildings. And the first, the most, the biggest thing with me is I keep it very well maintained. I called the city several times.
I can see that from the pictures.
I didn't want to hire everyone, I didn't want to hire everyone, set everything up, get all the dumpsters there just to be stopped by the building department. I got nothing from the city. My water line broke.
Another question for you.
The building, I didn't get any response.
Another question for you.
It's ridiculous.
You said that you contracted Milford Contracting in 2024 to demolish the building. So you made your own conscious decision in 2024 to demolish the building?
At that time, yes.
Okay. So what's different between then and now?
I changed my mind. Like I said, I had investors. They pulled out. I'm not ready to demolish it yet.
You had investors. You mentioned for 90 apartments, I think we're limited.
90, I think 86 or something like that.
Yeah, we're limited, I think it's eight stories there. So where were you going to put all the parking?
No, five.
Oh, five, so.
There's been plans that's been submitted, if you want to look at them with the planning, Nick Depew.
Commissioner Haig?
He's got, you know.
Okay. So.
Five, sorry, five levels. I was going one underground for parking.
Okay.
That's fine. What I'm getting at is, it's a visible mess. It's a risk to those around it. It's exposed in a way that the weather is now penetrating the walls. The reports have an awful lot of cans in them. Can do this, can do that, can do the other.
We can take another report.
There isn't a definite, no, we're not going to waste time on another report. This, this timeline that my colleague has been asking you about is a classic delay. Then another delay, then another delay.
Not on my fault. The city never got back with me. I tried awfully hard.
Okay. Any final remarks, Commissioner Haig? I'm going to take, give it to Commissioner Emery.
Just last one. He's a civil engineer, I believe. I'm a mechanical engineer. That's, that's an engineering fail.
I'll challenge that.
Okay. Commissioner Emery?
So my question, most of my questions are on timing. Commissioner Long covered most of it, but I did have a question about those two reports that were generated, one of them which we received today, which I'm actually not interested in even reviewing because it needs to be vetted by the city beforehand and was handed out today. I can't provide a comment what that report says. On the other engineering report by Anand, forgive me for pronouncing, Anand Enterprise dated September 18th, 2024, has the city received that before? Is today the first time we've ever seen that?
First time.
So that report was over a year old, and we just get it today for the first time? Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
All right. Inside that report, there are statements that say this building appears to be structurally sound. The word appear is a very interesting word. I saw at one glance, again, another report that needs to be vetted by our engineering staff or whatever, but there, I saw no structural calculations. I saw no architectural drawings. I saw no references to joists being part of the structural soundness of the walls. I saw none of that information. As Commissioner Haig mentioned, I am a licensed professional engineer by the state of Michigan. There's nothing in that report that I see that justifies this building being structurally sound. What I see is pictures in front of me with holes in roofs, walls, and I see a public safety issue with this building. So I find it interesting that the applicant chose to pull building permits, chose to rescind them because he quote-unquote changed his mind. I'm not okay with the public being at risk. I'm not okay with a developer or a landowner pulling permits, changing his mind, letting something sit vacant for a year and being a risk to public health and safety. So those are my comments.
Any other questions of Mr. Ferranzo and his team from the commission? Any other questions of Mr. Frasso and his team from the commission? Commissioner Baller?
I have questions for the city attorney.
Okay. You can, gentlemen can be seated then. Thank you.
Can I say something else?
I'm gonna let Commissioner Mayor Proton Baller ask his questions.
This is a legal proceeding, right? He's the building official, right?
Yes.
We all understand what a building official is and does. He has declared this thing
Uninhabitable?
Uninhabitable, a danger to public safety?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think we have any choice here, so I would prefer to just move along, right? Is there any, like, if we were to, I haven't even heard, I think they, they weren't explicit, but they're asking us to not-
Condemn.
Not condemn it. I don't see us doing that. I don't know how, excuse me. Yeah, sorry. I don't see how we could, we could go against what our building official is telling us to do. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving this forward and going on to the next agenda.
Make the motion then.
I'll move the suggested resolution.
You will, after the motion is made and considered, you may speak to the motion.
I will make the suggested resolution. That's it. No, I don't wanna read it. It's a waste of time to read. Do I need to read it?
Yes, I would appreciate it.
Okay. To make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion adopting a resolution to declare the property at 611 Elm Street, also known as 635 Elm Street. A dangerous structure is unfit for human habitation due to lack of maintenance, is insanitary and/or contains filth and contamination, in violation of the International Property Maintenance Code and the Birmingham City Codes, and the property owner must demolish the dangerous structure within 30 days, or the city manager is directed to complete the demolition and place a lien on the property for the costs of demolition and grading.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the commission on the motion? Any comments from the public on the motion?
Yeah, I just called Jeff a month ago and asked you personally that the building is structurally sound. When you, you said you drove by, I asked you, "Did you notice anything that looks dilapidated?" You said, "No, just some paint peeling." Isn't that what you said?
No.
Yes, it is what you said. It's absolutely exactly what you said.
All right, sir, that is not a comment on the motion. So does your attorney have any other comment on the motion?
Yeah, my client, Mr. Frasso, while he's not under oath, indicated on more than one occasion during his recitation that he's been trying to get a hold of the city. Should he have walked into the city, you know, and say, "Hey, I've been trying to call. No one's contacted me"? Obviously, that didn't happen. I didn't know about this, obviously, until just retained recently. He is respectfully asking the commissioners to allow him a very short amount of time to put the building into a situation where it is not going to be in a condition that it's, that it's dangerous. He believes the walls are sound. He believes that the roof does need to be repaired. He believes the interior needs to be gutted. He believes the interior needs to be remediated. That's at a significant cost. He's willing to pay that cost. He just needs a short amount of time. So I'm not a procedural expert on these types of matters, but whether you could put it over two weeks, 30 days, I don't know, you know, what is allowed for that to, for him to get a permit to conduct this. He says he was worried about hiring all the people, but then getting turned down by the city. And I'm not an expert in the building department, that's for sure, but he is-
Certain numerous persons do work in the city, construction, renovation. They all know to come in and apply for a permit, at which point you are told all of the conditions that you need to follow. And then you do indeed hire people after you've obtained a permit. So Ms. Kucherek, do you have any final comment?
Yes, I just want to make sure the record is clear that there were three different formal notices of violations, not to mention numerous conversations and emails. The dates were 2/28/24, May 20 of 24, and then July of 2025. And I have to comment that we have been dealing with this, "we" meaning the building department, along with myself, for quite some time, giving all these opportunities. And I keep hearing that the city, we called the city, we called the city, we called the city. I'd like to have you take a look at Attachment D. The lack of calling the city or not calling the city did not create the contamination and the inhabitable, dangerous structure that is contained by pictures in Attachment D. Phone calls do not make this or make it go away. Inaction by the owner is what created this. Not the city, not the staff.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bingham, would you please do a roll call vote?
Mayor Teresa Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Katie Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Commissioner Ho.
Yes.
Commissioner Haag.
Yes.
Commissioner Anthony Long.
Yes.
The motion is passed. Thank you. We now move to new business, and our first item is a public hearing for 176 South Old Woodward, Kaishin Izakaya, formerly Sushi Japan, Slop Amendment Ownership Change. And we have Mr. Dupuy, and I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:39 PM.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Again, Nick Dupuy, the Planning Director for the City of Birmingham. I've got here a joint report for you, between myself and Mike Simpson, the investigative captain. First half, or I guess maybe the bigger chunk, is the Special Land Use Permit Amendment for an ownership transfer of an existing bistro. Emphasis on bistro. As we know, in the City of Birmingham, we've got very specific rules for bistros, and when they were designed, small eclectic restaurants that offered a unique experience. Sushi Japan formally went through that process. They were selected, they moved forward, and they were open for about two or three years. Now, the new prospective tenant, Kaishin Izakaya, is planning to move in with no changes to the exterior, no changes to the approved floor plans, no changes to the outdoor dining, all of which are very important to being a bistro. There will be, of course, a new sign when the time comes, when the applicant is ready. And that's the extent of the Special Land Use Permit Amendment. Further, as was evident in the police department report, they are requesting that you consider authorizing the clerk to sign the local approval notice for the transfer of the liquor license. So of course, I've got the applicant team behind me, both ownership and representation. Should you have any questions for them?
Does the applicant team wish to make any statement or provide any information?
If I might approach, and thank you, Ms. Mayor and commissioners, just a very quick kind of, well, let me introduce myself. I'm David Draper. I'm attorney for the applicant, Mr. Wu Jin Lee, who stands to my left. He is the owner of this restaurant. They'll be serving sushi, sashimi, ramen, yakitori, as well as sake and beer. That is the plan there. It's very similar to what's, what's there presently. This won't be a change. So we're just asking for the two things that Mr. Dupuy mentioned, the Special Land Use Permit Amendment, to transfer the ownership to his corporation, Mr. Lee's corporation, Gold Coin Inc. And we'd ask the city clerk to be able to authorize a form that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission needs for this new ownership, and to transfer both the Class C, that's the sitting and having a drink liquor license, as well as the SDM, and that's for the carryout, if they were to sell any bottles of carryout wine, essentially, or beer, to Gold Coin Inc. My client has filled out the applications, been found to be an appropriate candidate. He is funded. He's paid his fees, signed the contract for special land use permit, and Mr. Lee's ready to answer any questions and anything you guys would like. Thank you.
All right. So at this point in a public hearing, the questions come from the public. So do any members of the public in the room or online using the raise your hand function have any questions for either Mr. Dupuy or the applicant team? My only question is, how do you pronounce exactly the name of this new entity?
Okay, so, there's exactly, it sounds like Kaishin Izakaya.
Kaishin?
Kaishin is satisfaction. So, yeah, you guys, I hope everyone enjoy, you know, my food. Also-
Izakaya means?
Izakaya means Japanese pub. So also, can I introduce myself? Yeah, my name is Wu Jin Lee. I have been running sushi restaurant, the core Sushi Hana in Brumfield Hills, the past 12 years right now. So actually, the opening, the, I'm very excited and I'm honored to open the business in Birmingham, because it's my second dream to open my second business. So anyway, I really want to introduce my, actually, I just created everything, design, interior design, and recipe, and the menu, and selecting sake, and some, just creating, you know, creation, everything in my restaurant. I did it by myself. So anyway, I'm very happy to open the Izakaya restaurant in Birmingham. Hopefully, this transfer liquor license, hopefully, the passes as soon as possible. Only I can say.
Okay, so again, any questions from members of the public for either Mr. Dupuy or the applicant team? I see none in the room, and I see none online, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any questions, Mr. Dupuy or the applicant team, by the commission? I see none. So would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll move the suggested resolution.
Second.
All right, and it needs to be read again, because this is a public hearing.
I move that we adopt a resolution to authorize the city clerk to complete the local approval notice at the request of Gold Coin Inc., and to approve the transfer of the Class C and SDM liquor license with Sunday sales, AM and PM, and one additional outdoor service area permit from Sushi Japan Inc. to Gold Coin Inc., DBA Kaishin Izakaya, located, did I make the wrong?
No, you need to do both.
Okay, well, let me finish this one, and then I'll do the other one.
You gotta do the previous one.
You did a good pronouns.
Located at 176 South Old Woodward Avenue, Birmingham, Oakland County, Michigan, and to adopt a resolution to approve the Special Land Use Permit Amendment for 176 South Old Woodward, Kaishin Izakaya, to transfer ownership and update the Special Land Use Permit with the new owner, Gold Coin Inc.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments on the motion at the commission? Any comments on the motion from the public in the room or online using the raise your hand function? I see none. Ms. Bingham, roll call vote.
Commissioner Haag?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Long.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baller.
Yes.
Commissioner Emery?
Yes.
Commissioner Ho.
Yes.
Mayor Teresa Long.
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we, we look forward to what, Satisfaction Japanese Pub opening shortly in Birmingham. And we thank you for being interested and investing in our city.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. We now move to new business B, Resolution to Direct the Engineering Department to Proceed with the Final Design of Wimbledon Drive Phase 2. We have Melissa Koda, Leo Bazinski, and perhaps Ryan Kearney.
Forgive me. I'm just saying goodbye. It's Nick again, City of Birmingham. I know I'm on the report, but I plan to start this one off.
Well, we're delighted to have you.
Great, great, great. I do, I'm gonna do the first half. It'll be a summary of how we got here for the most part, and then I'll let my colleague, Melissa Koda, the engineering director, finish it off. So in terms of process, the phase we are in is what's called the interim report. It's actually the fifth step in a nine-step process for city-initiated unimproved road projects. The previous four or so steps are lots of notice, lots of resident-type meetings, packages that were prepared for them, an optional survey, things like that. This city-initiated unimproved streets project, or excuse me, process was developed in 2021, and we've since followed, I believe, three projects following that framework. So this Wimbledon Phase 2, as we're calling it, is Wimbledon Drive, I'll call it the east side of Wimbledon Drive between Oxford and North Adams. Phase 1 was completed earlier, excuse me, last year, and it necessitated the capital improvements projects. Had this one up next. Forgive me. I stuttered a little bit. So there's all sorts of background, all sorts of residential street with standard documents that was in your folder, excuse me, your packet, but this particular project was included in the fiscal year 2526 budget. There it is, the capital improvement plan. Lastly, it did go to the multimodal transportation board, just as a brief note. We did have one meeting there where there was a lot of residents. You all listened to that meeting for the most part. That meeting was what instigated the moratorium that you placed on the multimodal board. There was a lot of confusion. Unfortunately, we had a lot of, I would say, members of the public speaking more to the roles of transportation board rather than the project itself. So that did not go back to the multimodal transportation board because a moratorium has been placed on it. So we've now moved to the next step, which is this interim report. And if I may, kick it to my colleague here for more of the design details.
Thank you, Nick. Good evening, commissioners. So with this, and part of your packet, is some utility information, and also kind of an explanation of why this would be the next step to be able to do utility improvements on Wimbledon Drive from Oxford to Adams. The existing water main in this location was installed in 1925, so we're a 100-year-old water main at this location, and currently the size is an existing six-inch water main. The proposed improvements would be a 12-inch water main. That would help us connect an existing 16-inch water main on Woodward Avenue and a newer 12-inch water main on Adams Road built this year. So it'd be a 12-inch water main all along Wimbledon Drive, and that would also feed future improvements to the north, where it would be proposed eight-inch water main, where current sizes are four inches and six inches north of Wimbledon itself. In this location, the existing combined sewer was installed in 1925, 1926, and those sizes ranges from eight to 12 inches. And with that, the sewer needs replacement and improvements. And with that, we plan on also doing some separated storm in this location for the runoff to be able to connect to the Phase 1, because in this location of the subdivision, mostly the area drains from the sewer from the north towards the south itself. So with this, Wimbledon itself, essentially the backbone of future improvements that are required and needed in this location of the subdivision. Engineering staff did have an informal meeting with residents on August 28, and to be able to provide them information about the project, previous assessment of costs from Phase 1 Wimbledon, and essentially the upcoming schedule of how that process works of going for a multimodal board and coming to City Commission tonight, and then what's the future steps to essentially bid the project, which we anticipate, if we get direction tonight, to bid the project in January or February of 2026, and start construction in late spring of 2026. And with this, construction period is expected to last about three to four months of construction itself. And Nick and I are available for any additional questions the City Commission may have based on engineering or also planning itself.
So it's my understanding from reading the packet that Wimbledon Phase 1 is approved in design, 26 feet, no curves, and it is your intent to make Wimbledon Phase 2 match Wimbledon Phase 1, since it is one contiguous road?
Yes. And with that, staff also did look at the street width to see, the standard is 26 feet, to see if there's any exceptions, to essentially either have a smaller width road, smaller than 26 feet, or greater than 26 feet. And we did not see any exceptions that are required, that met that guideline to change that vary from the 26-foot standard. And as part of the package, I think Nick is pulling up-
Right, and that was true on Wimbledon Phase 1 also, so that makes sense that it's also true for Wimbledon Phase 2.
Yep, and as part of the packet is, is there's a, essentially, we call it a scroll or a larger plot of what the road would look like with the 26-foot ride, one of the, with no curves. With that, the first one has the aerial in the background, and then the second one has essentially the aerial off, just to be able to see, depending on how someone wants to see the improvements on the road.
All right, so you're asking the commission just to approve moving forward with this, again, the street design at Cape Seal, 26 foot wide, no curves?
Yes.
And that is the only purpose of this meeting this evening? This is not a financial discussion or a special assessment district discussion. It is only a move forward with the design discussion and then come back to the commission?
Correct.
All right, all right. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Emery?
Just one question from Melissa. On this image that we're looking at here, the red is proposed, and the purplish-blue color is existing. Is that-
Yes.
Correct, okay. That's it. That's my only question.
Any other questions? Commissioner Haag?
So I got a certain degree of discomfort in taking any further progress because of the moratorium on multimodal, because sections of this stretch are 18 feet, I believe, today. They're certainly narrower than 26.
There's a few locations that are narrow, about, narrow than 26 feet. They were measuring maybe around 22, 24. In certain locations, what we did notice is the edge of the Cape Seal has severely deteriorated. So essentially, your driving area may be smaller than that, but you could see remnants from our surveyor of what used to be the edge of the roadway limits.
But for practical purposes, the road has become a much narrower street based off-
In certain locations, yes.
So it has the equivalent of bump outs through erosion, shall we say? It has the equivalent effect that we would find on an improved or an unimproved street where we put bump outs by creating a narrowing of the street. Yes or no?
So in this location, since the width varies, there's actually certain locations where the road is actually wider than 26 feet. So when you narrow it to 26 feet, you get the assistant width for this. With this, we don't have any, on the aerial exhibit, we don't have any proposed bump outs, because usually in those locations you need-
I'll rephrase the question, because you went in the opposite direction. The road has degraded so that there are narrow points. Yes or no?
Yes.
Those narrow points create a visual perception that the road is actually narrower than the original road was designed. Yes or no?
Currently, in certain locations on this road, yes.
And that is the same effect that we would see by bump outs on a new road, that the road gives a visual perception of a narrowing in certain specific locations?
It could, yes.
Okay. So what we also have here is speed studies, which were taken on this road. And yes, they show some nice speeds, but the distance between Wimbledon, on Wimbledon, between North Adams and Poppleton is about 860 feet between stop signs. Between Oxford and Poppleton is 680 feet between stop signs. There's no expectation of vehicles getting up to speed in 600 feet unless you decide to absolutely hammer it and tear through a residential neighborhood at ridiculous speed to begin with. What I would like to see is what are the equivalent speed studies on a road that is 26 feet wide, that is classified a major street? Because we don't have that data. Because we don't have that data to understand what this shows us here versus what it would end up being, because this we discovered in Wimbledon Phase One is a major street. We didn't know that. Multimodal didn't know that at the time either. We all found that out rather late in the process. So what I don't see is a true A to B for data analysis of what speed implications would be on a road that is a classified major street. What I see is a speed indication for a degraded road with narrowing. So until I can see what it's going to look like in the future, I'm not prepared to move forwards at this time, because we actually have other items in this package as well, talking about speed concerns on Arlington and Shirley, which turned into a very nice road and turned into a very fast road visually. Is that really being executed in practice by some drivers? Yeah, I'm sure some are. One of our PSCs lives on that street and probably can tell us, but I think he's also complained about speed, so...
But Arlington and Shirley is 33 feet wide.
It is.
And the residents were told that that was gonna be an issue and preferred that width anyway.
They were told it was going to be an issue, and so what we're doing is learning. We've learned here that this road is currently narrower, and there is a request to make it wider. What we have is a road speed study for a narrow street. What we don't have is a road speed equivalent for a major street of the right width that they want to turn it into. So I don't know what the traffic's going to do. So the learning I take from Arlington and Shirley is find an equivalent piece of data so that you know what you're looking at before you find out after the event.
Other comments? Other questions? Commissioner Long?
The only comment that I'll make is this street has been in dire need of resurfacing and attention for many, many, many years that we're finally getting a chance to get to. And the fact that it's been narrowed because the grass has grown into parts of the decaying and crumbling street on the side doesn't magically make it narrower. It happened not because anybody planned it. It happened because this street has not gotten the attention that it deserved or needed until now. So I respectfully disagree with regard to the fact that just because the road is now maybe 14 feet wide, which is just a number I'm picking out of the top of my head, but was originally 26, and everybody's grass has grown into the roadway and narrowed it, doesn't mean that we should now go to 14 feet. So I support this road at 26 feet all the way along, and I would also suggest that narrowing the street in portions and then making it back to 26 feet is actually dangerous versus keeping it one width all the way through.
Commissioner Emmerich?
I'd agree with what Commissioner Long just said. And also, part of engineering this road, I would argue that we could, in fact, do those speed studies that you need to know as part of engineering, and have our engineering staff look at that. And then also, as part of the engineering, we should look at fire access. I don't know off the top of my head, but there's minimum widths on fire access to roads, and I know on industrial developments there is, and commercial developments, there is net width is 26 feet. I don't know what it is on this, but we could ask Melissa to look into that. So I would be more concerned that the road is skinny, and 26 feet is what our minimum road widths were.
I believe we heard that from about fire for 26 feet in the Phase One discussion.
Yeah. I think that's the thing. So just to conclude, I would, I agree with Commissioner Long, and I'd be in support of this moving forward.
Commissioner Host?
Well, I'm going to be the contrarian. We have a responsibility, I think, to the Multimodal Transportation Board to have them make a recommendation to us. The last meeting they had was August 8th, I think, and that's when, at our subsequent meeting toward the end of August, we put a moratorium. They finally met eight weeks after that moratorium. They met last week to discuss among themselves what they think they should be their purview. And we also agreed that we would have a workshop with them before we put them back in motion. I think it's imperative that we have that workshop, and it should be after the election. And what we're doing is going around the Multimodal Board and not offering the citizens of that street and that neighborhood their due process and learning what the alternatives are, as well as the downsides and the trade-offs. And as such, I can't support this motion. We should give this to the Multimodal Board, and they should be recommending to us. We are doing something sneaky.
Commissioner Host, I will object to your use of the term sneaky. We know what the Multimodal Transportation Board recommended for Phase One, which was a fully improved road. The Commission, in deference to the residents, did not support that resolution. We agreed, albeit some of us belatedly, to support Cape Seal only at 26 feet because of the importance of getting their road done and because of the cost. It makes perfect sense that Phase One and Phase Two are the same decision, which is what the staff brought to the Multimodal Board at that last meeting. I'll ask Ms. Kucherik to opine on whether we need to send this back to the Multimodal Board before the Commission acts.
No. I don't, I don't believe that you do. I think that the ordinance, first of all, this board is an advisory board, like most of our boards, which is very different than the BZA or very different than the Planning Commission, which is given actual jurisdiction and legislative power through the Zoning Enabling Act. These are advisory boards, and the advisory portion of this is that the board may make a recommendation to the City Commission, may. The fact that you've already acted on Phase One, and it's duplicative of Phase One, Phase Two is gonna look just like Phase One, you already know what the recommendation is. The Commission, in fact, chose not to follow the recommendation and instead come to an understanding with the residents because of some of the cost factors and the variables. So no, I do not believe you have to send it back to the Multimodal Board. I do think you can act tonight if that is your prerogative.
And Mr. Dupuis, it's my understanding that we need to act tonight in order to get this designed and ready, or Ms. Koda, for the spring construction season, or we lose a year.
Yes. Ideally, with part of our capital improvement programs, we have to essentially also figure out when we're going out to bids for projects, because our design consulting engineers cannot design for projects at one exact timeframe. So with that, we have to stagger our bidding process for it. And also, too, we have to stagger when construction projects for capital improvement projects occur, because we also have to do staffing checks. So we have one full-time inspector and two seasonal inspectors, so they need to cover all of our capital improvement programs. So with that, we do have to stagger projects to make sure we've got all of our capital improvement projects that are being constructed next year being inspected.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Haig?
Question. Why were 26 feet, when the drawing actually says match the 24 feet existing at Adams? Why do we flare it out to more feet? The print itself over in the far right says 24 plus minus match existing. It's shown as the taper there. So why would we then grow the street anyway?
So within this location right here, 24 plus or minus, because Adams Road was still under construction when the topo was taken. So with that, they'll collect the information after we proceed with final design with that, but this area was under construction when topo was taken on Wimbledon.
Okay.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I, for one, do not think there's anything sneaky about what we're doing. I think this was discussed previously, that with the moratorium of the Multimodal Board, that this would come to us for a decision, given that there was precedence set when we did Wimbledon Phase One. So I respectfully disagree that anything we're doing here is sneaky. 26 feet for a road width is not a new number. It wasn't like pulled out of a hat or out of the sky. This has been discussed in reports back to 2013 with complete streets. We've had the fire department tell us they need 26-foot wide roads to drive a fire truck to your home. The construction on Wimbledon is also not new. We've been discussing it for, I don't know, a year and a half or two. There were many Wimbledon Phase Two residents present during our Wimbledon Phase One discussions because they wanted to hear what was going on, but the intention that what we did on Phase One would continue to Phase Two, so I don't think anyone's being bamboozled or not heard, and there is an opportunity here tonight to speak if they wish. So I will be in support of the motion.
Mr. Host?
Yeah. For our city engineer, my question would be, if we had a workshop with the Commission and the Multimodal Board, and they met on the Phase Two, could we do it a month from now and not lose the window that you're talking about? You know, in the bid process, in the bid process.
Both be able to answer this. The problem, the issue we run into is the reason why we couldn't, Multimodal Board didn't, couldn't meet until end of October was people's availability and plus holidays themselves. So we were trying to coordinate where it was not your normal Multimodal Board meeting of the first Thursday of the month, so trying to get everyone's availability to meet, that's the reason why it took until end of October to be able to do that. I would say there's probably both concerns from both departments, that we're coming into upcoming holidays with Thanksgiving and other holidays itself, that with that, anything that gets delayed with this, essentially, if we're a month behind, this project's not going out to bid until potentially February or March of 2026, and then it pushes back construction to start right around summertime, beginning of summertime itself. So every time we lose a stop in it, and that's assuming that we're able to meet in November, and we don't know that offhand from the Multimodal Board, what their availability is.
And further, what we would be planning is December, and I suppose, when you think of the results of that joint meeting, whatever that may be, of the very many results that could be, I don't know that we would expect that the Multimodal Board would be ready to just fire back up, which their next meeting would be early January. So then we're talking just that, that's three months from now. So I think if I'm reading it correctly, that's kind of crippling for the project, based on what I'm hearing from engineering. That's the general timeline for the multimodal.
Okay. I asked for one month, and that's what Melissa said would push it back to, I believe you said, January or February, which mean it couldn't start until the summer.
Yeah. And one month would be, I believe that date would be November 6th. And if you know what's happening on the 4th, I think that's just a lot for one week, frankly.
Yeah. There's not gonna be a workshop on, yeah. So Commissioner Long?
I'm gonna support this motion. We, we had extensive meetings with regard to Phase One. We did get the Multimodal Board's suggestions and recommendations. We didn't follow some of them. I've served on the Multimodal Board. It is an advisory board. It is not a board that makes decisions. They make recommendations. We didn't take them with regard, all of them with regard to Phase One. And part of that was not because we didn't necessarily agree with the recommendations, but we were fighting the fact that costs from Arlington and Shirley to this project doubled or more in costs. And so, again, we're doing this project because the water and sewer are over 100 years old. So talk about giving somebody heartburn. I have heartburn about waiting 30 days longer to get this done, because if we have a fire event there or what have you, you know, we're gonna look back and say, well, we probably shouldn't have waited, right? We have a crack fire department, and we've got fire, working fire hydrants in that area, but it needs to get done, and it needs to get done right away. And I don't have any concern that the Multimodal Board, when they get back up and running again, and I hope that it is soon, and I'm looking forward to having the workshop, that they can weigh in on future projects. But I don't have any concern that their recommendations here or what we're going to do as a Commission is gonna be any different whether we decide it tonight or we decide it in January.
I agree, because essentially, Phase Two is gonna look like Phase One. So there's the recommendation, and I'm sure they have stated, and I listened to that meeting on the 23rd, that given their druthers, they would always recommend a fully improved street that aligns with the complete street stand, plan, and we understand that. But we, the Commission made the decision not to do that for Phase One, and it is perfectly makes sense that we're gonna make that same decision for Phase Two. Commissioner Mayor Proton Baller?
My concern, and it doesn't mean I'm not gonna support this, but my concern, we, we used the word "design" several times tonight, and this is not design, this is engineering. And there's, it may be limited opportunity for creativity here, but there's always opportunity for creativity. We know what the materials are. They're Cape Seal, they're grass, there's trees, and there's a sidewalk. And, and there's, the width, I'm looking at the street right here, there's varying widths if you're just looking at the existing Cape Seal. And somebody with some creativity could look at this, just like they could, you know, I'm gonna tell you what's happening on Arlington and Shirley, and you may not even realize this. The city's coming along and asking us what kind of trees we want now in our front yard. Wait, I gotta put trees in my front yard? Well, it's our front, it's our city right-of-way, and they wanna put three trees in my front yard. I get to choose what kind of trees. Do I get to choose two, maybe, instead of three? Maybe. Do I get to choose what species? Yes. Do I get to choose, no, I don't want any trees in my front yard? Nope. Nope, gotta have trees. Well, it seems to me putting trees on a street is part of the design of the street, but we didn't bother with that design process on Arlington and Shirley, and we're not really bothering with any design process on Wimbledon. We're just saying, let's put 26 feet of Cape Seal down. And, and I gotta believe that maybe this, maybe we ought to engage the Architectural Review Committee to just take a look at this and say, what are some options? What could we do in terms of width or plantings or whatever to make everybody happy and everybody proud without spending a whole lot of extra money? So, so that's my concern. It has nothing to do with whether, you know, we're gonna go ahead with this or not. I say go ahead with it, but I really would like to see more sensitivity brought to these projects from an aesthetic, design standpoint. And, and when we talk about, when the, this is, I totally respect what you're doing, but it's engineering, it's not design.
Commissioner Haig?
Were Poppleton and Oxford ever unimproved streets?
Huh?
There's a second half to the question. I want the first half answer first.
I didn't get the first half. I'm just, what did you say?
Poppleton and Oxford, were they ever unimproved streets?
Offhand, I do know Oxford and Poppleton north of Wimbledon aren't improved. I would have to check to see south of Wimbledon and reference the unapproved roadmap.
Okay, 'cause they're both 24 feet. So we built them wrong?
With that, I would have to go out there and look at the plans of when Oxford got built, and was that before or after an adoption of the street, of the street width standard?
Pretty new streets.
So I do know that part of Oxford in Mohegan was built in 2014, 'cause I had to pull up information for the utilities for that. So with that, that would have been before the streets with policy.
Okay. We've got an awful lot of matching at 24 feet in here. So just pointing out, we've got discontinuities that work today.
Yeah. All right. Well, we could have the motion and then comment on the motion?
I'll make a motion. Resolution to direct the Engineering Department to proceed with the final design of the Wimbledon Drive Phase Two to include the planned improvements to the water and sewer mains with the Cape Seal treatment of the road surfaces within the project area.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments on the motion at the Commission? Comments from the public? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your remarks. Please limit them to roughly three minutes. And please remember, this is not a financial discussion.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rick Brodsky, 625 Wimbledon Drive, and I respect that this is not a financial discussion today, but as we discussed last time, you know, in Phase One, the financial piece is part and parcel with the engineer's report, with the design and ultimate decision-making. And there have been material changes in state law that I do think, and I wanna make sure the Commission is thinking about and is mindful of. The city passed, and I previewed this before when it was still in the consideration phase, but they passed the transportation funding package, and that's going to give the city substantially more resources for road improvements. And that's going to give the city substantially more resources for road improvements. The city's now projected to receive an additional $900,000 per year for the next five years pursuant to this road funding plan. When, when phase one was, was contemplated and, and decided upon, that funding, that additional funding did not exist, and so the decision about the 50-50 split was made without, you know, that, in a separate economic reality. But the new road funding law now dedicates substantial funds that Wimbledon will receive. And the capital improvement plan for Birmingham in '25, '26 contemplates 12 street improvements, street, water, and sewer projects. Only two of those involve special assessments, and I would suggest that road-related expenditures, most warranting offset by these new funds flowing in, are those that are going to be borne directly by city residents rather than expenditures that are already contemplated by, by the budgeting process. So I wanted to just raise that point and just ask, I don't know how much you all have considered this, but as the process goes along, whether it's today or the next meeting, I'd love to hear more about how the city is planning to allocate, you know, whether it's 900 or something thereabouts, because I think it depends on tax revenues. But how the city plans to allocate that money, you know, will, obviously, will any of it be considered for Wimbledon Phase Two? Separate from that, I know that there was discussion last time about the city revisiting its process in general about, you know, the policy on funding road improvements. I'd love to hear if there have been any further discussions on, you know, what, where that stands, if the, if the commission has made any decisions on what, you know, the, the next iteration of road funding will look like. And then just on the, the safety piece, or I guess the 26-foot piece, my only question there is, you know, I, I know in phase one, we had, you know, especially when we were contemplating a, an improved or quasi-improved road, a lot of different safety features. And I'm wondering, with this 26-foot Cape Seal road, are there any safety features built in to that? Like, I know there was the bump outs that had been discussed and various other things. Are there any safety, safety features that, or I guess like traffic flow features that will exist in the 26-foot road that we've been discussing? But thank you all for your time and for all the work you've done on our street. I know it's been a lot, and it's appreciated. The plant, the, the road funding bill? Sure.
Yeah, so we are aware of the road funding bill. That, that amount of money is an additional 4% for the city's total road budget for this year, so.
But it's, if I may respond, may I?
Certainly.
It is, in terms of the, the city and village distribution, it's a 33% increase from the, I believe it is the like city and village allocation. I know, I think last year, or I guess fiscal year 2024, based on, I'm looking at the House fiscal policy.
Right, there was funding that we also receive under Public Act 51. This is a separate funding stream. Concomitantly, the city is also losing $110,000 in revenue sharing because of the cessation of the gas tax, so.
Right.
Win some, lose some.
Yeah, well, win 900,000, lose 110. Maybe there are other factors at play, but this says fiscal year 2024, the city got 2.7 million. There will be estimated increase in 889,000. And so, you know, I, I think that it's good to know that you all are thinking about it. I don't know how it all nets out, but it sounds like it will be a pretty substantial net increase to some, you know.
Right, and part of it is dedicated to local roads and part of it has to go to major and local. There's a split, so.
Right, and so whatever, you know, goes to extra on major roads, I think making it so city residents who are going to have to directly bear these costs, you know, get the, some, some benefit of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other comments?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Danny Seidman, 652 Wimbledon. If you squint in the fourth house on the bottom there, you can see my kids. So first of all, you know, we've been talking about our roads for, for a long time now, and I am, yes, repairs are long overdue, and I am, you know, anxiously awaiting the fresh sewers and water main. But I, I'm thrilled we're in phase one, look forward to phase two. Couple items I want to make sure we keep top of mind while you're considering this resolution. So first, the funding mechanism. Again, I understand I'm not here to debate the 85-15 or anything like that, but the funding directly drives the decision-making in terms of what the road design is. We went back and forth with this for, you know, many meetings over the last couple of years. And, you know, there was a very passionate discussion at the end of the phase one about, you know, when phase two comes up, we're going to have a new mechanism for deciding what this looks like. And I would just like to hear if there's, you know, maybe I've missed a communication or it hasn't been determined yet, but I would like to hear, hear an update on that. Curbs, I think, are important for a variety of reasons. Not only holding the structure of the road surface together, I believe that we heard from the engineers in the past, but allowing for those bump outs, those safety mechanisms. Previous conversations at previous commission meetings, we said basically there aren't a lot of safety mechanisms that could be built into a plain Cape Seal road. But when you introduce curbs, all of a sudden you can do bump outs, speed tables, other safety-related mechanisms, I, I think. And yeah, per Commissioner Hague's comments, I watched a few people run those stop signs at above the speed limit today. And in terms of the continuity between, you know, east side, west side, we have several roads in our neighborhood where the curbs just kind of transition off or transition on. And while we have a chance to make the decision that I think the majority of the residents would support, I think we should at least, if you can, amend the resolution or put forth another resolution to consider a design with no curb and with curb unimproved. At least we'd be able to, you know, continue the discussion without putting off the spring construction timeline. I think that, again, just based on the feedback that we all heard at the end of phase one, the preferred design was the unimproved with curbs, but we were too far along in the process at that point to go back and revisit it. And outside of that, you know, I just want to say thank you for your consideration. My family, we've lived on the street for 10 years. We look forward to many more decades and a smoother road to, to live on and safer infrastructure. So thank you for all the work you've put in for this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Cliff Rager, 541 Wimbledon. Just a couple of comments, one of them pretty specific to my wife and I's property. We're at 541 Wimbledon, so we're right at the pie between Warwick and, and it looks like that area has been redesigned, although the emphasis is on the red. We're looking at how the, the red is now making the frontage in front of our home significantly larger, and I'm wondering what the plan was for this area right here. That's a specific comment. Talking about creativity, that's one of the elements that's not considered just to plow the road in. Unless it's, unless there's a good reason, you don't see the need for that extra footage in front of our house. The other thing is, the advisory councils, the subcommittees, they don't have the power to decide, but they have the power to get into some of the grimly that the commission would not get into. Because you have time, you don't have time to get into every aspect of a city like Birmingham growing, and it, it's a big little city. So I wouldn't slough off at the subcommittees so casually. This might be a special instance, but I think that some of the discussions at the subcommittee level aren't ones that would take place necessarily because you wouldn't want them, right? And we wouldn't want them with you. So having said that, I'll leave the financials to when the financials come out. And I do support the idea of having a, a study, a costing study to have the curbs in. I think that that would be a good way to determine which, which option makes sense.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, I'm Andrew Barron. I'm at 612 Wimbledon. I've sat through many of the meetings you had last year about the west side, Phase One, and the people that lived on those streets had a whole lot of input into what eventually happened. But tonight, it's like, well, we did phase one, we're doing phase two the same way. Like, we don't have input. We're stuck with what they decided. I was at those meetings, but since it wasn't my block or my house, I didn't feel I had a vote on that. But I do want input on what's in front of my house and on my block. And when we have an engineering study done that has no curbs, then when we come in front of you and say, we would like curbs, you say, well, we've had an engineering study done. If we have to do it over, we won't be able to do the street. Let's not do that, at least as an alternative. Let's have a study that has curbs and no curbs. Or let's just have one with curbs, because I know for a fact that a great number of my neighbors would want curbs in front of their houses and on their block. So I don't want the train to leave the station and then be told, well, it's too late. And in terms of the spring season, as you all know, the paving on, on phase one is being done now. It's not done in the spring. The construction season is ongoing. So it isn't such a time-sensitive matter that we can't give that a little thought. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'm going to kind of tack on to my husband. My name is Sally Swift. I'm at 541 Wimbledon, and we are right there at that curve. And as you can see, there's a major bump out in front of our house that wasn't there before. Concern being parking. Are we going to get tagged with paying for Warwick also? Are the sidewalks going to change? Is there going to be a stop sign, a yield sign? Is that going to impact in front of our house? And that is my, my, I have a lot of concerns pertaining to that, also because I'm also in phase one and two. So anyway, thank you.
All right. Any other comments in the room? Online, I see, we'll call on Tim Bradley.
Okay, sir, maybe I'll just, you can audio here. But I've been listening to the discussion and just wanted to also not support to the idea of a.
Mr. Bradley, address please.
Yes?
Address, please.
Okay. I just, Tim Bradley, 519 Wimbledon. I'm like Sally in Cliff. I'm straddling phase one and two, so I'm kind of on the east side of Oxford, so I'm kind of tail end of phase one, but I'm really on the phase two side of things. Also interested in getting a quote for unimproved Cape Seal with curbs. I think that would be a great idea to see what the comparison would be with the 50-50 split, and I think there'd be a fair amount of interest in it, and I think we're hearing that side too. So I would like to see that if possible.
Thank you. Mr. Danny Hill.
Hi, Danny Hill, 282 Wimbledon. I am on phase one of the project, but I'd like to raise a point about kind of the urgency here that keeps being touted amongst the commission. I, I want to raise that, you know, we, in the phase one project, we were told that there was a sense of urgency because of the decaying road and the infrastructure beneath it, which we understand and appreciate. The project on phase one didn't start in the spring. It started in the late summer, arguably even the fall. And now we're at a point where we are uncertain, there's a lot being sort of said around the neighborhood, if this project's going to get done by the winter or if we're going to be extending phase one of the project out until the spring. And are we going to be on a dirt road in the winter? Are we going to be plowing the road? Is it going to be finished in time? We pled with this commission for an entire year last year about economies of scale and bidding the process out for contiguous projects. Now we're hearing that essentially what's done on phase one is the same as what's done on phase two. It's going to look and feel exactly the same, yet there's a sense of urgency here. And now, you know, we could have done this all as one project if this is going to be extended out until next year. We asked for a waiting period because of the funding that was coming in from the state, and we were denied. And now we're being told again for phase two that there's a sense of urgency here. And I'm curious if the three-month timeframe that Melissa laid out is, is accurate. Is this going to be three months, launching in late spring of 2026? Or is it going to be just like phase one and have a much later timeframe that extends out much further? Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly.
Sally Swift, 541 Wimbledon. Last question is, when the, although the report lists, the tonight interim report is really a final report, is what it says. But from what you've been saying, there'll be a final report that will be done. Will the residents be presented with it, and will there be opportunity for changes? That's my question.
Ms. Coda?
Melissa? Or, and/or Nick? Could you address what the next step will be for the design report? And also, if you have any information about the timing on phase one that you can share for Mr. Hill? We would appreciate that.
Yeah, first one, I just pulled this up. Phase one, because of the potential re-public notification of the special assessment district for Wimbledon Phase One, that was not able to go forward until city commission meeting June 23, 2025. The preliminary engineering schedule had it where it was going to, would have been in an April 2025 meeting. So essentially, having to redo the special assessment process for the Cape Seal treatment, essentially shift everything three months behind because we can't necessarily do the project award until the special assessment confirmation or role occurs. So that answers that question. With that, once we perceive design direction potentially tonight from the city commission, our engineers will start designing that location for it. Usually, there's not necessarily another phase that we meet with residents to be able to discuss things. With that, they can essentially, residents reach out to the engineering department and find out information about the project. Usually, the first time they'll see plans is at a residential meeting that we will have before we go through the whole special assessment process that occurs in springtime of 2026.
So Mr. Rager and Ms. Swift could reach out to the engineering department for the specific questions they have about 541?
Yes.
And the frontage? All right, and then for Mr. Hill's question, do you have any information about the completion of phase one before the snow flies?
So with that, we're monitoring the progress of the contractor's schedule. Right now, they are proceeding to be completed here towards the end of November timeframe. But with this, this is all weather-dependent. Fall timeframe, when it rains one day, you're potentially down for two days versus if it rains during the summertime, you're only down for a day. So with that, we are, we are monitoring the contractor's progression on the project, but please know it is weather-dependent as any construction project is.
But you still expect it to be completed this year?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the public? All right, bringing it back to the commission, any further commission comment?
Commissioner Long?
I just want to remind everybody that when we went through this process, we wanted to do an improved roadway, and we wanted to do it with curbs. And we had a lot of opposition from the residents from that, understandably so, because the cost came in twice what the cost for Arlington and Shirley was. And also, we, we also were told, discovered that this is a major road. Is that the proper term? Major street? And so because of all that, we, we shifted for this road only, and you can go back and watch the meetings because they're recorded, but we, we, we made it very clear that it was just because of this particular road and its designation that we went with the 50-50 split.
On Cape Seal only?
On Cape Seal only.
Right.
And that cost, added cost to the city was around 100, 120,000 is my recollection. Don't hold me to the number. Again, it's recorded, it's in the meeting, but it was about 120,000. And right after that happened, some members of, or some residents said, well, now we'd like curbs. Now they, now. Now they... And we said, "Well, that's not part of what we, as a commission, agreed to do, because, you know, we have the city checkbook, and you got to balance it. And so we can't just spend, spend, spend." We stretched to get the extra $100,000, approximately $100,000 for the Cape Seal. But the curbs are going to be hundreds more thousands of dollars. It's much more expensive. And so we didn't go that far. So I just want to make sure everybody has a proper recollection and keep it on top of their mind, that we did the road, and how that came about, and why curbs didn't come about. But that we started this process... I started this process, in my mind, wanting to have curbs for this roadway. But the residents did not want to pay for it. And again, I understand that because of the way the cost came in. So let's also understand that we are dealing with an economic climate where the cost came in twice what the costs were for Arlington and Shirley. And Arlington and Shirley came in lower than what the initial costs were, which was great. The city did a great job there. So there's a lot of moving parts here, and there's some things that sometimes, little pieces of the puzzle that we sometimes forget. And then we look back and wonder why we did what we did. So I just think it's really important for us all to keep that, you know, top of mind as to how the project came along. I do not think that it is unreasonable to say, after everything we went through with Phase 1 and all the discussions and what have you, that this is a contiguous road, that it's going to be the same for Phase 2 as it is for Phase 1. I just... I don't think that you're going to have a different roadway, or you're going to add all of a sudden add curbs to a contiguous roadway. When we pushed for curbs and got pushed back and reached this agreement, you know, and compromise, that at that point, the residents were happy about, but then they wanted curbs, but there wasn't money to pay for curbs.
And curbs is not just adding curbs. Curbs is engineering the surface of the road differently and grading it differently to support the curbs, which is why it was much more expensive with curbs than without curbs. And the commission never offered the 50-50 on the improved with curbs. It was the 50-50 was on the Cape Seal only. Commissioner Hague.
Maybe for the future. If there's any way of splitting the subterranean infrastructure portion and the surface portion out. And the only reason I say that is, I don't think anybody has any arguments, any complaints, or any issues with improved water or sewer. I get none of that from anybody. Any conversation, no feedback. I don't think that's the problem. It's always what's going to happen on the top of it. So that's actually where all of our discussion has been. But this is a combined activity. And I just want to make that differentiation, that I have an issue with the surface answer. I have zero issue supporting what happens underneath the surface, though, because that is just basically health and safety. But the road surface, I wish we could break it out into two separate activities. It would be very helpful if we can figure out a way to do that in the future.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Host.
You know, I'm not willing to go for this tonight. And it's not because of the urgency. It needs to be done yesterday. However, procedurally, I don't think it's right that we exclude the Multimodal Transportation Board from their advice. And more importantly, the Phase 2 people should weigh in on what they want in the various options, as well as what options, when you go strictly just with Cape Seal, what you lose. And as such, I will not vote for this, because we haven't had our workshop with the Multimodal Board. And it's not fair to that community to not have their voices heard.
Thank you, Commissioner Host. Mayor Potem Baller.
So I heard, I think, six residents speak, and I'm not clear. I'm ambivalent on this. I really want to know how they stand on this motion. And do you guys know what each of those persons, whether they supported the motion with concerns or they're opposed to the motion?
Well, that was my take. There's nobody argues about sewer and water.
Right. But there's a motion. There's a suggested motion. And you can either be in favor of it or against it. And I don't know what you guys... If I missed something, let me know. If the two guys up there and the four out here were really clear about what they were advocating, let me know.
We do have a hand up online if we are allowed.
Yes. I think Commissioner Baller, everybody would prefer that we move forward with 50-50. That is Cape Seal only. Several people want curbs. Curbs were not part of the 50-50 assessment.
You're out of scope.
Pardon?
You're out of scope of the motion.
Right. I'm just... He's asking what people... For a reprise of what we heard from the residents.
In terms of whether they are in favor of the motion or against the motion.
And so...
It's a binary.
Right. And so I will call on Travis, who has a hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. Travis Bouchard, 715 Wimbledon. Thanks for your patience. I was having a hard time unmuting myself earlier. I live on the corner of Wimbledon and Popleton, have three young kids, as do, I think, almost every other person in the immediate vicinity. And I echo Danny, I can't tell you the number of times in a single day, multiple cars in a row just burning through this intersection. It's a really awkward, sort of meandering intersection, Wimbledon and Popleton, as well as Oxford. It's, you know, at these, like, you know, odd angles that are sort of swooping. So vehicles tend to buzz through the neighborhood, add on to Woodward. And there's just so many accidents that are, you know, almost... You can hear tire screeches, whatnot. So I'd recommend, and I appreciate Commissioner Hague and Baller sort of asking, you know, the rest of you to take a beat and not have a knee-jerk reaction in the mindset that this is sort of like an all-or-nothing milestone, that we need to move forward this evening. It would be great if we could consider some more creative design solutions and speed-mitigating tactics. I know we can't do speed bumps and things, and we're limited if we don't have curbs, but maybe there's better stop signage, you know, yellow paint on the intersection just to keep this safe, because, as Commissioner Hague pointed out, I guarantee you that the speeds are going to dramatically increase if this is just in... You widen to 26 feet across the board. So... Oh, and then the second... My last comment is on separating the sewer, basically underground and above ground. Because I do want to call out something that I heard Melissa say early on, which is that this east side of Wimbledon will, quote-unquote, be the backbone for the sewer infrastructure north Popleton, north of Wimbledon. So it sounds like we'd be carrying additional cost for a larger-size sewer infrastructure for the northern side of the neighborhood. So I'd like clarity and just to... If you could speak a little bit more.
Yes, there's no... There's no cost to the residents for any of the underground or sewer infrastructure. That cost is entirely borne by the city. All right.
We'll clarify that. It's the connections that are residents' responsibility.
Yes.
Clarify it out.
The laterals that the residents have to put in are their own responsibility, but the size of the sewer main under the street, the sewer main itself under the street, those costs are entirely borne by the city. Ms. Coda, one more time. Is it possible, again, we've... You're inviting residents who have questions about the treatment of the street in front of their homes to call you and meet with the city. The question about adding yellow paint or stop signs, is that normally part of this design, part of the design phase? Or would that be considered by multimodal in parallel or after?
So usually, what happens is that our design... Engineering consultant will design the plans. Then they get forward to our consulting city traffic engineers to do that review. So that's part of the design process. It will get reviewed by our consulting.
And so there's an opportunity to look at speed-mitigating factors, additional painting and additional stop signs at that point?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioner comment? All right. Then I think we will call for the roll call vote.
You're not going to let any of these people talk?
If you would like to make additional comments on the motion, you can come up one more time.
Cliff Rager, 541 Wimbledon. This conversation sounds a lot like when we were wondering why we couldn't do the whole thing at the same time and get efficiencies, right? So now it's broken up into two. We're wandering back into the elephant in the room, and that's the cost. And so, okay, you did the first stretch. I didn't hear any discussion from the commission that the rest of the road was going to be the same. And the elephant in the room is, how can we evaluate a final proposal that is forthcoming when we don't know the costs? And we don't know the costs of alternatives? And that's not changing. And I don't hear anyone even mentioning it, that it's in their thought process. So as for this proposal, I would support it, with the caveat being, we have no choice, right? We have no choice. And what was said in prior meetings by residents of one area of Wimbledon or another does not change the fact that at least we had offsetting proposals of different structure and the cost, and we were able to evaluate it. I don't see that now. And we're jumping into the final resolution? When this final engineering resolution comes out, there's no substantive changes that will be made. This is it. And I don't remember a discussion that the underlying assumption on Phase 1 of Wimbledon was going to be what we're going to do on the entire road. Now I hear it. Now I hear it. I guess I missed it.
Andrew Barron, 612 Wimbledon. To respond to your question, which was that you weren't sure what the residents wanted, this resident would want you to vote against this resolution as it's presented. There's no consideration of what the cost would be of putting in curbs. Everybody who spoke to it wants curbs, or at least the option of curbs. And the fight last year was about fully improved concrete with curbs, not about Cape Seal with curbs. Yes, it was. I was here, too. And last year's price is last year's price. This year's price may be different. You were surprised by the difference between the prices on Arlington and Phase 1 of Wimbledon. Maybe you'll be surprised by the differences in pricing between Phase 1 and 2. But if we have to go with this alternative, we won't find out. All I want is at least the alternative evaluated. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Rick Brodsky, 625 Wimbledon. Frankly, I am ambivalent on the motion tonight. The only thing that would make me against it is if there's no chance for the city to consider further, like, safety and speed mitigation measures after tonight with the Cape Seal. So, you know, if that's something that can still be considered by the City Engineering Department, I love the idea of, like, more creativity, getting other, you know, groups involved and weighing in on that. If that can happen after this motion passes, you know, then I'm less concerned. And then hopefully, we would have a chance to weigh in on it as residents. And then also, I just wanted to follow up on one item. And I didn't know this, that the city had to basically, you know, cover an additional $120,000 from going from 85-15 to 50-50. So then, if that's the case, and again, I know not everything's going to be exactly the same this go-around, but, you know, it sounds like it would be an extra $120,000 to go from 50-50 to 15-85. And if the city's getting hundreds of thousands in additional funds, then an additional $120,000 thereabouts to shift the allocation from 50-50 to 15-85 would be outstanding. And so I'm not... I'm not accepting at this point that 50-50 split. So I'd love some consideration of that. But thank you all again.
Hello again. Danny Seidman, 652 Wimbledon. And just to further on my neighbor's points, and just make sure that what I'm saying is clear. Again, forgive me for my lack of procedural knowledge here, but just per Mayor Potem Baller's comments, I am not in favor of the resolution as it is currently written. If it can be amended, I forget if this is possible, but to include the, you know, Cape Seal treatment and Cape Seal plus curb, at least so several months from now, we can have the conversation, right? If we don't move forward... If we move forward as-is, we're eliminating the ability to have this conversation about 50-50, 85-15, you know, curbs, no curbs, et cetera. I think it's reasonable to just ask for both quotes. And then, similar to what my neighbor said, we can see that table cost, what we get. We can have conversation about different funding mechanisms. And since all of our, you know, said with all due respect, and especially for myself, our memories are a bit fuzzy from last year's conversation, I request that if Melissa's able to come up and talk a little bit more about the speed mitigation and safety options, because as I recall from our previous meetings, you know, curbs and the associated infrastructure allow for the safety mitigation or speed mitigation and safety additions. But when you're dealing with Cape Seal exclusively, everyone kind of shrugged and said, "We can't really do much for safety." And I just want to make sure that that's an accurate statement. If we could hear from the engineers, I'd appreciate it, so we're all on the same page. Thank you.
So Melissa, one more time, please. I think there's some confusion about estimates versus quotes. I don't believe that the city, for the Phase 1, had actual quotes for all the options you had prevented... You had presented estimates based on previous experience in the city to give the general idea of Cape Seal versus... Cape Seal versus improved with curbs. And when the road was designed one-way with curbs and as improved, and then when that quote came in, it was wildly different than what we had estimated, which is why the commission took the path it did. But I... It's... Please educate me if I'm wrong. I don't believe that we ask something to be fully designed two different ways to get two actual quotes.
Correct. In the past, when previous unimproved roads needed underground utility infrastructure, a motion has been passed with a design direction, and it's just only been one option for it. As you mentioned earlier, that is correct. When you're installing concrete curbs on a roadway, especially unimproved roads, you need to make sure you have positive drainage from the existing sidewalk over what we call the greenbelt or the trees, and where the grass is located at, over the top of curb, and then drain onto the roadway. So a lot of times, when you have adding curb to a road where a road currently doesn't have existing concrete curb and gutter, you need to essentially lower the roadway down to make sure you've got positive drainage down to there. So with that, you're essentially looking at, if you're installing concrete curbs on an unimproved road and need to do that, you would need to essentially design a roadway that way, and that affects grading, rim elevations, et cetera. So in the past, we've only gone forward with one design to go out to bids and get quotes on.
Right. Because if, in order to present these residents with two actual quotes for their consideration, the city would have to pay to have it designed twice.
Yes. You would have to have our engineer consultants design it with kind of what we call a base bid, which would be potentially an option of just Cape Seal only, or an alternate with Cape Seal and concrete curb. But to be able to go out to bids for that, you would have to construct almost two sets of construction plans. It would mostly be in the grading plans that you would have to specify, just so that way they can see what gets built. Potentially, you have more driveway approaches being removed when you're adding concrete curb and gutter. And then also, too, as I mentioned before, your rim elevations on utility structures. They can be, are most likely going to be lower if you put concrete curb on a roadway. And just looking at the preliminary topo of this project, that would probably be the case, where you're going to have to lower the road to make sure you have positive drainage.
Okay. City Manager Ecker, if you're online, do you have any comments you'd like to offer about how we proceed?
Sorry, I was trying to turn on my video. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Well, I do think... Well, I do think that, first of all, on the issue of the multimodal board, considering this, I think that we gave them that option in August, and they ended up having a lot of struggles and disagreements about other things kind of related to this, but they did not take action on it. I do think it is important for you to proceed tonight. I do think that it is also a factor that we would want to consider doing what we did on Phase One, because this is all one road. The curb situation, as Melissa pointed out, it would require two sets of designs in order to get good estimates, because we would have to have all the topo on the road and all of the drainage associated with it, and the curbs, et cetera. So I think at this point, as Nick and Melissa pointed out, if you were not to take action tonight, it would set it back several months likely, and then you would be looking at potentially missing the window next season to get all of your projects done and include this one. So I think it would be best to move forward tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Hag, you had a comment?
Just, Melissa, can you explain what's going to happen to any treatments in the easement for people who have parking pads, and how curbs, no curbs will make a difference there? Just so that everybody understands implications as well.
Yep. So at the residential meeting, we do have a slide that went over special treatments permits, just for the general public. If you do an improvement in the roadway, what we call the green belt, it needs a special treatments permit. A few examples is a parking pad, irrigation, duggeredive, approachway, et cetera type of a deal. If you have a concrete curb and gutter, you would not be able to have a parking pad on the street, just because essentially you would have a new curb approximately six inches height, and then you wouldn't be able to drive over it to be able to park on your parking pad. So if a roadway currently has parking pads and a concrete curb and gutter was installed, the parking pads would no longer be accessible to be able to park on.
Does that cover it for you, Commissioner Hag?
Yeah, that does. I just wanted everybody to be clear about it. And then actually, just as I'm looking at the aerial view, can you also just explain what's going to happen with the, it looks like there's a strip of parking right next to the condos adjacent to Adams, because that appears to be part of their, I'm guessing, parking allocation for the residents in there. How's that going to be handled?
So with that, for that, we would have to review that with the planning department and the building department to see what their parking situation works like. I do know from when Adams was under construction this year, and having to park in that area for a field meeting type of a deal, residents do park there in that location. And so with that, that would have to be some of the communications with the residents to figure out, A, what's their current special treatments permit required, is allowed or got approved as, and then B, essentially, what would that look like after this project's completed?
All right. We have one final comment from Mr. Danny Hill.
Yeah, Danny Hill, 282 Wimbledon. I'd just like to echo the sentiment of my neighbor Cliff Rager, that we on Phase One had a lot more time, a lot more consideration, a lot more cost estimates given to us. I would not support moving forward with this motion, because I don't believe that it's fair to the residents on Phase Two, who don't seem to have been given the same amount of time and consideration and information, and being told here today by Ms. Ecker and others that this is all one road, this is all Phase One will look exactly like Phase Two, this is all together. It's actually the total opposite of what we were told over and over again last year, that this was two separate roads, this would be done as two completely separate projects, and Phase Two would have the chance to voice their opinions and have their time and get their full considerations of how they wanted their road, because these were two separate things that would not be bid together and would not belong together. Now it doesn't seem that way. We're being told that we have to move forward hastily, because these are all one road, and it'll be the same no matter what. And I don't think that's fair to move forward with this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. With that, Ms. Bingham, if there's no further commission comment, would we please call roll call vote?
There is a motion and a second here.
The motion was, and who was the second?
Commissioner Long.
Commissioner Long, motion and second. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Are you going to allow one more comment?
We have completed comments. Everybody's had an opportunity to comment at least twice. Commissioner Schaefer. Yes. Commissioner Host.
No.
Commissioner Hag.
No.
Mayor Chriese Long.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baller.
No.
Mr. Emmerich.
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Long.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So Melissa, we will look forward to the designs and your meeting with the residents about the designs, and ask you to please do your best to accommodate all residents who reach out to you with questions and concerns and desires. Thank you. All right. We now move to a resolution to approve a special event permit for the City of Birmingham Public Services to hold the Peter Cotton Tail Trail Event. And that is you.
I'm actually going to defer to DPS representing. This is a new special event that they're proposing. Scott Zalinski's online.
Scott, all right, thank you. Mr. Zalinski, you're on.
Good evening. I apparently can't get my video to turn on. I'll be trying to keep this brief, though, for you guys, because it's getting late. We're really excited, DPS and Parks and Rec mainly, for bringing this new event to the city. It's basically an Easter egg hunt with some other fun activities. It's a family-oriented setting, encouraging outdoor activity and community connection, highlight of programming and moving forward with more programming for seasonal offerings. Some of the event highlights is, like I said, the Easter egg hunt. There's going to be a photo opportunity with Peter Cotton Tail, and there's going to be a kid's zone with crafts, games, face paintings, bubbles. We're also looking to work with some community tables for local groups and sponsors for treats to be purchased. So Kalenice has been spearheading this, and she's looking forward to working more with the community and to keep bringing opportunities like this forward to everyone.
All right. Do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Zalinski about this new event? We're delighted to see more family-friendly events, just like the Pumpkin Patch event that was held this past weekend, which was wildly successful. Commissioner Host.
I don't have a question, Scott. I just have a comment, and that is, thank you for adding to family events.
All right. Well, Commissioner Host, would you like to make the motion, then?
I'd like to make a resolution to approve a special event permit as requested by the City of Birmingham Department of Public Services to hold the Peter Cotton Tail Trail Event on Saturday, March 28, 2026, contingent upon compliance with all permit and insurance requirements and payment of all fees, and further pursuant to any minor modification that may be deemed necessary by administrative staff at the time of the event or event cancellation that may be deemed necessary by administrative staff leading up to or at the time of the event.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comment on the motion at the commission? Any comment on the motion from the public? I see none in the room, and I see none online. If you wish to make a comment, you can use the raise your hand function. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We now move to New Business D, Resolution to Approve the Metro Act Application of Easy Fiber Texas LLC and the Metro Act Permit for Project Location shown in the exhibit, and in addition to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the bilateral form on behalf of the city, and direct the city attorney to assure Easy Fiber's adherence to city ordinances and all the requirements. This is going to be presented, I believe, by Ms. Cota, but unless she's online, I assume she's coming back. Ms. Kucherek, could you give us an overview of what the commission's options are in this regard?
Certainly. The Metro Act through the state of Michigan really limits a lot of authority and autonomy by individual municipalities when different, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired, when different companies come forward that want to do telecommunications, fiber optics, those kinds of things. What the act provides is that all companies need to do a permit application, we charge them $500. But then, going forward, once they're ready to implement their plan or their actual business activity, they still have to adhere to our ordinances and assure that all things are done to make sure that public property is protected. What we are obligated to do is to provide reasonable accessibility to companies in order for them to conduct their business activities and to provide the residents with opportunities for whatever telecommunication device, fiber optic, internet, what else? Cable, thank you, opportunities. So we don't get a lot of control because of the Metro Act, but I think it's still really important for a new company like this, and I believe I see representatives from Easy Fiber. Easy Fiber is going around to pretty much every community in Oakland County and other counties as well. This is a Texas-based company that definitely has a presence in Texas and a large presence in Illinois. I've been in communication with them along with the engineering department. Honestly, and we represent four different communities, they've been presenting in all four communities. I've asked them to come here and to do a demonstration for you and a presentation, because what they're proposing is unique to the state of Michigan, unique to City of Birmingham. There are some cities that are getting fiber optics put in throughout their city, but not quite like this one. I have some concerns. Easy Fiber is aware of my concerns, and I think the representative will be able to lay out what their plan is. I would encourage the commission to ask a lot of questions. They have also provided to me their license agreements that they have developed in the state of Illinois. I've had an opportunity to look at those. I think that they would provide a framework that we would also engage in, so that they are providing license agreements anytime they do work on our private, excuse me, public right of way, to ensure that our right of way is protected, returned to the same condition that they founded in, et cetera.
And the state of Michigan Public Service Commission has given them a license to provide these services throughout Michigan? Yes, so, all right.
They have done everything to comply with the act, and their application is in compliance with the act. I just want them to be able to explain to the commission and the residents how their project works, because it is different than the city has experienced.
Right. And my concern is that their exhibit of their working areas is, in essence, the entire city.
It is, in fact, the entire city.
So if you, sir, if you would like to come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and make the presentation that Ms. Kucherek has suggested that you make, the commission would like to hear what you would like to do and how you intend to do it.
Good evening, Mayor Longy, and commissioners. I did send a brief presentation to the city engineer Melissa earlier today.
There we go.
Yeah.
Oh, excellent. I won't slide slap you with this, but let me tell you about who Easy Fiber is and what our project is for the city of Birmingham, and also what we've done elsewhere. So Easy Fiber, we started the company about a little over four years ago, July of 2021. We actually purchased a fiber optic network in Houston that was strictly a GovEd-focused network. So we actually supplied internet and connectivity to six school districts across the greater Houston area, had three cities as customers, two counties, a couple of 911 districts, and a couple of enterprise businesses as well. Fast forward to today, when we bought the company, it was strictly GovEd-focused, so schools, government, education customers. We purchased the company to roll out fiber to the home. So since COVID hit, there was a big focus on bandwidth, and specifically lack thereof. Traditional DSL cable systems from AT&amp;T, Comcast, et cetera, COVID made us realize that we didn't have enough bandwidth. So those mediums by which the internet's deployed are subpar, whereas today, fiber optic is the gold standard by which you connect to the internet or connect location to location. What we're installing in Texas, since we bought the company, we've completed about 15,000, 18,000 route miles of fiber across the greater Houston area, which encapsulates about half a million homes passed. We've got about 125,000 customers, residential customers in Houston. And we've expanded into Santa Fe, New Mexico, Albuquerque, New Mexico, greater Seattle area, most recently in Chicago, or the suburbs of Chicago, and now into the suburbs of Detroit. We're planning a ubiquitous build, so if you saw the map, where it looks like we're hitting every street, and that's essentially what we want to do, is to go to every residence, every small to midsize business, every governmental address as well, SCADA Systems, traffic control. We are a smart city network provider in a number of cities across Texas. So the fiber, while it looks like it's going across the entire city, it will go across the entire city. That's our plan. But keep in mind, that's how we deliver home internet to all homes of our name.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes. Well, yes. So what sets us apart is actually a number of different things. One is when we found the company, we wanted to be different. We didn't want to be the big telecom company that, when you made a phone call to an 800 number, you didn't actually speak with someone, you'd talk to an IVR, and you'd wait 30 minutes and finally you're talking to someone. When you call our local number, you're actually talking with someone that's in our Houston office in Houston. We operate on a 90-10 basis, which means within 90 seconds, you're talking with at least, hold on, I'm going to repeat that wrong. Within 10 seconds, you're talking, I'm going to take that back, because I don't know the exact specifics, but you're actually talking with a live person at our office. Additionally, all of our customers have zero contracts as well, so we're not locking anybody into a contract. Additionally, we have a price-for-life, so if you sign up for our service at one gig for $69 a month, you'll have that same price for 10, 20, 30 years down the road, so long as you don't cancel service. We're a local company as well, meaning that we're based in Houston, but every office will operate independently. So whenever we actually come into Michigan, we're actually coming back in December to look at real estate. We'll actually employ about 300 or so direct employees in Michigan, on top of about 500 additional contractors. So what's also in the communication deck is what we do to communicate with the residents. There's more or less nine touchpoints between mailers and the door hangers, telling customers what to expect, and then our commitment to restoring their property back to normal. Obviously, we're going to pull permits. We've got very intense restoration language within these license agreements that we have. So if we do damage something, rest assured that we are going to fix them. In addition, we are bonded, licensed, and insured as well.
So I'm very interested in the implementation. As you can, if you've sat through this meeting, residents are not thrilled with people digging holes in front of their houses, even if it, and I'm assuming you're only working in easements, not on private property, but your presentation says underground and pole. Are you planning to install new poles, or is that just existing poles?
Existing poles. So the bulk of our network is actually, about 99% of our network is actually underground, whereas we do have some areas where we're forced to go above ground, drainage districts or rivers that are very deep, or in some parts of every city that we operate in, sometimes we're forced to go aerial.
And for an average resident with a 50-foot yard or 100-foot yard, are you going to be digging in front of every single home? How many holes per home? Just give us an idea of what this looks like.
So we install a, if you go to, back to our presentation, go to probably page 18.
18.
There you go. So at the front of neighborhoods on the arterial streets, you're going to see in-ground structure that is on the very far left. That's a 17-inch by 30-inch enclosure that's subterranean. Those are, my engineer Jerome is here with me and can tell exactly where it is, but those are every several thousand. Mostly intersections. Whereas the flower pot, which is the second picture over. Whereas the flower pot, which is the second picture over, that's a six-inch round, looks like a sprinkler head cover or irrigation cover, that's installed every other home. And so that will actually, the fiber goes fed through there, and that'll actually feed two homes. So when a resident signs up for our service, we'll actually do a drop, do a hand-traveled line from that flower pot right there to the actual residents themselves. So we don't actually operate on private property until a resident calls and activates service.
And the other two pictures, please.
Those are our cabinets, so each cabinet serves about 7,500, 8,000 customers. Those are installed generally in county right-of-way or right-of-way that's off of the beaten path that is, we have to have commercial power to that, and that's what actually powers or puts light on the actual fiber optic network itself.
Mayor Potemballer.
When AT&amp;T put in their fiber, they put in a bunch of those all over the neighborhoods. You're saying you don't put in, are you familiar with what AT&amp;T does or did in Birmingham?
Yes.
You've seen the boxes in Birmingham?
I've seen the boxes that they've deployed across the nation, yes.
And how are you, the same or different?
Our boxes will cover more homes. Their boxes will cover about 300 to 500 homes, whereas ours will cover about 7,000 homes.
So that means you would have no more than three boxes to cover Birmingham?
Depending on how it's engineered, it could be an upwards of four, as low as two, but three would be the right.
It seems like you could tell us where they'd be.
We haven't completed all of the engineering designs yet, so we do two layers of engineering. There's high-level design, which we basically get the routes, which is the map that you saw on the application itself. Then once we get closer to the actual construction start itself, we go into a low-level design process in which we actually go and actually do look at engineering drawings. We send builders out and they call out that there's drainage here, there's a water main here, and actually gets into the low-level design. From that point, that's when we actually design and say the cabinet needs to be located here, because that also is based upon optical length of the fiber itself. So the city may be 100 miles long and 30 feet wide, in which case we have to put cabinets ever so often, whereas the city could be larger, we can only use two.
So you say you put them on county roads?
We try to. Well, we try to because those are closer to larger intersections where there's already traffic control cabinets, in which case a cabinet that size isn't going to become an eyesore.
So where do you show the cabinets on the map? Because the county road is the only one without a red line on it.
Again, once the low-level design comes in, that's where the cabinets will be placed.
So you haven't done your high-level design properly by marking the county road, then?
I'm not entirely sure.
There's one main road goes through Birmingham, it's kind of big. We don't own it. It's the only one.
That's actually a state road, though.
Yeah.
But my point being, we don't own it.
Are you talking about Woodward or Maple?
Woodward, basically. The really big one.
Yeah, that does not have the red line on your map.
I think what he's saying is he doesn't know where they're going to go yet.
Because I've got more questions on the map when you get to that, but you keep talking about county roads, we don't work on a county basis, and you don't have any markings on the one road that you're talking about you're going to use. You have absolutely nothing showing how you're going to conduit into it. So your map's not very accurate, really, is it?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, the map is accurate from the standpoint of... The map is a representation of all the residential roads we're planning to go down to access all the homes. How the core route goes through this city and the surrounding cities, we haven't designed that yet. And until we design the core route, we won't know where the cabinets are going to be placed. And what Garner's saying about where we typically try to put cabinets, we try to keep them out of residential areas, we don't want them in people's front yards, we don't want them by ditches where they can get flooded, we don't want them where traffic can take them out and that kind of stuff. So it kind of limits where you can put them, but we've had more success in areas where we don't have to have residential places for it. But it does vary.
What I think, what you're scratching at is, we didn't identify the county road because the county road is not included in the permit, the Metro Act permit for the city itself. That's why there's no marking on that.
I'll let him finish his question.
Do you have additional questions, Mayor Potemballer?
No.
Do you have additional questions, Commissioner Haye?
Yeah, so you show your map, goes down each one of the roads. You know our power poles and our communication poles go in the backyards, right?
Yeah.
So are you planning on digging up everybody's backyard to run fiber and drop flower pots in them?
No, it's planned to be mostly front easement.
So you're buying me a new sewer line, right? Because you're going to dig it up?
Well...
So how we do the construction, in the north up here, the sewer, the water are lower than what we bore at, we bore between 18 inches to 36 inches. So whenever we cross a water line, a sewer line, or a gas line, we're required by law to expose them till we see what the depths are, and then we can drill from there.
So you know the gas lines are about 36 inches, because when they did the drop in mine, it was about 36 inches, because I watched the guy dig the hole by hand. So you're going to drop a mole in everybody's front yards?
Drop a mole?
How else are you going to do horizontal boring underground when you got...
Oh, you're talking about a drilling rig, yeah. It's not going to be in everyone's front yards. These drilling rigs do about 500 feet. So where we can do 500 feet contiguous, we will, but if there's identified obstructions, then we'll do potholes so we can figure out where we can avoid infrastructure. But it's not going to be everyone's front yard where we can have a drill.
So the flower pots, you said every second one, so what I mean by a mole is the handheld air thumpers?
Yeah, so those are typically done by a tool that's an air compressor-driven, that's a torpedo. It's not going to be a drilling machine. And those will come down certain sides of the street to be able to get to where we're going to put those flower pots. But they won't, but they don't normally have potholes everywhere for it. Typically where they come up to where the flower pots are.
Running the conduit, you're looking at horizontal boring, I assume, like the Vermeer units that we see around town?
Yeah.
That typically have to run, it's like 150, 200 feet, I think is what I usually see before they have to re-emerge. And then we see conduits sitting above the ground usually for about a year while we wait and wait.
Yeah, you won't see that with us. Our construction team is pretty quick and pretty efficient, so for a city of this size, if we're only allowed to run two drills, which we can get about 1,000 feet a day, and if we only work five days a week, the footage we're looking at, it's about 17 months. The more drills we throw in it, the quicker we're done. And we typically do restoration within two weeks after construction.
So the city attorney said that your approach is unique. Is that the uniqueness of your approach, that it's predominantly underground versus hanging from the existing poles that we have everywhere else?
Yeah, so what we're seeing in older cities is that the poles, that infrastructure is usually not in good shape to have more attachments. And usually there's already multiple attachments to them, and to avoid being on the bottom ends where you can get too low and get hung up by traffic where you do road crossings, or the pole conditions themselves aren't good enough to be able to do an attachment, then it's underground is what we target. And that gives us the speed that we're looking to do.
It's also protection for the fiber itself. As I mentioned, we've done about, in total, we've done about 22,000 to 24,000 route miles of fiber. Most of our fiber, like I said, about 99% of it is actually, it's actually a little bit more than that, is actually underground. The fiber's protected, most importantly from F-150s that hit telephone poles, squirrels that undoubtedly will shoot through the fiber themselves. So the infrastructure's protected as well.
Other questions from the commission?
Yes.
Commissioner Baller, Mayor Potemballer.
You don't really do, you don't actually do the install or the construction yourself, correct? You hire contractors?
We have contractors.
So do we know who those contractors are? Are there a bunch of them? Are they ones we know?
In every region that we're in, yeah, we'll have between six to eight contractors. In Houston, we've got seven, so no matter, in a city the size of Houston, we've got seven. In Albuquerque, we've got two. In Santa Fe, we have one. In Seattle, right now, we've got two. In Chicago, we've got eight slated.
Birmingham, you'd have one, right?
In the greater Detroit suburbs area, we'd probably have four.
But only one would do the Birmingham install, right?
Yes.
And it just occurs to me that it's the contractor, not them, who would, who would want to be overseen, or we'd want to know they were responsible. I'm sure you've had good experiences with contractors and bad experiences, right? I mean, everybody does. We like good contractors. Could we get a good one?
We have a process for selecting them. So yeah, we want good contractors as well.
And is the remediation also done by a contractor? Because that is where the rubber hits the road. I mean, consumers' power digs up stuff all the time, their remediation frankly is terrible, non-responsive, and they try to outweigh you. You know, they killed a whole line of hydrangeas going, running a new gas main down my driveway, and they are, they were never replaced. So, I mean, people in Birmingham have very elaborate activities going on in their easements. Almost all of us have underground sprinklers. So if you disturb an underground sprinkler system, does remediation mean you're going to repair it?
Yes, ma'am.
And how do we hold you to that, and what is the process for people who are unhappy with the quality or the timeliness of the remediation?
I'm very glad you asked. So one thing about our contractors is we've got a very rigorous process by which we onboard contractors, that's why we don't have a lot of them. Additionally, we are very quick to fire them if they do not follow our standard safety protocols and our protocols set forth by our construction team. So there's that. Additionally, we've got construction managers and construction inspectors that we actually hire. We actually hire a third party as well to oversee them. So in case there's no nefarious acts of, hey, one construction manager that's employed by us says that these guys are doing a good job, we actually hire a third party to come in and oversee that to be independent, verify that our contractors are doing what they say they're going to do, say they're going to do, and also follow up what we say they should be doing as well. As far as the restoration, our contractors are actually required to do that, so it's in their best interest to leave the property as good as it has been, if not better than what it was beforehand, because if they damage something, it's on their dime, and it's in our contract that they have to come back and fix it. Now, you said, mentioned the sprinklers. Sprinklers will, we will continue to have in our business the years, the eight months after we come through on constructions, because sometimes people will turn on their sprinklers. All of a sudden, you know, a year down the road, they turn on their sprinklers and they've got a busted head, call us, we open up a ticket. If you go to one of our, go to number 18 or 19. So we have a ticketing system that whenever they call, we actually log the tickets. At any given time, we'll have, this is a screenshot from a couple of weeks ago, 168 open tickets, average resolution time is three and a half days, and that's resolution time to the homeowner themselves or to you in the city. So we actually log this. Additionally, moving forward, I'm our SVP of Government Affairs, I've been with the company since we named the company, equity holding the company, and so I've realized that we have to have better communication with everyone. So we'll actually have ongoing, in upwards of monthly meetings, bi-monthly meetings, at whenever cadence the city would like, go over residential complaints, city complaints, permit reviews, construction progress. So I've developed a new process by which we are communicating, overly communicating, to make sure that we're doing right by you guys and right by our residents. We're also, we're a full-profit company, that's not lost on us, and so we're in customer acquisition. So if we anger people, people aren't going to buy our service. So it's our best interest to make sure that we leave their yards, leave their right-of-way better than what it was beforehand, and we truly be an active part of the community.
Other questions from the commission?
I have a few. I'm reading online that you lost your BBB certification in Texas from the Better Business Bureau. Is that true?
Yes, that is true.
EZ Fiber received complaints regarding property damage, including hitting water and gas lines during installation, which has led to a stop order in Albuquerque. Is that true? Albuquerque?
That is true.
Other complaints include lack of communication, poor project management, and damaged landscaping. The company also faced issues with internet service such as slow speeds and technical problems like CGNAT, which can affect gaming and remote access. As a result of these issues, EZ Fiber recently lost its Better Business Bureau accreditation. Is that accurate? I mean, I'm Googling, we can all Google this, right? Like, I just Googled this and this is what came up. So what's happening in Albuquerque?
So what has happened in Albuquerque is there's three fiber providers that are operating within the city. The first time that we entered the city along with two other providers, the city was ill-equipped to handle the amount of infrastructure upgrades that were happening with the fiber optics. So us being shut down was not unique to just us. In fact, all three companies got shut down, while we worked with the city to work on a better process by which, we made this ticketing system, they actually used our ticketing system to start working through the residential complaints. So we've addressed that with the city, everyone's back to work, so everything is, by and large, back to normal in Albuquerque. As far as the Better Business Bureau, I can't speak to that only because there's active, I guess, deliberate, I guess, negotiations with BBB. It's just an ongoing situation. I can tell you that the allegations there are, obviously that we're not in agreement with BBB.
Are you guys being sued in Katy, Texas, still for damages?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
The utility district in Katy, Texas is suing EZ Fiber for damages pursuant to a stop-work order.
I thought that was resolved.
So I guess my concern is, is we have 7,800 homes, give or take?
Something like that.
Something like that in Birmingham. And I don't think we want 7,800 residents complaining that their water line's been hit, or that their sprinklers have not been repaired for months and months and months and months. Like, we don't want that. I don't know if you're aware, not your business, but it recently was a gas company replacing gas lines in Royal Oak, and they were doing boring, and they hit the other gas line, and the house exploded and somebody was killed, like less than a mile from here. So, I don't know, I have some concerns here that these aren't isolated incidents. And the fact that you can't comment on certain ongoing issues, yet asking us to embrace you is concerning to me. And I don't know how we, and I defer to Mary, how we avoid that unpleasantness while still trying to encourage what you're trying to provide. And so, you know, I don't know if you want to explain more how you can give us some level of feeling warm and fuzzy that we're not going to have a whole bunch of residents in here complaining about why we let EZ Fiber come into the city when all these other cities are having these issues.
I think what you're going to see online is the negativity that is just abound on the internet itself. I think if you look at our, if you look at our Google reviews, we're 4.9 stars on Google, we've got about 15,000 reviews, which is indicative of, if we've got 100, we've got half a million homes passed, and we've got 125,000 plus-or-minus customers, so you're looking at about a 1% take rate on Google reviews. It's pretty indicative of what we've done. If you take a look at those positive reviews, I think you're going to see a lot more good than you will bad. I don't think that construction happens, and we understand that. And have we made mistakes in the past? We absolutely have. We're a four-year-old company that's growing very fast, but what we've done to correct ourselves and to be better, to hold ourselves accountable, we learned from Albuquerque, we didn't. We also learned that if you don't change, then you're not going to grow as well. And that's also why we've expanded into other markets with the speed at what we've done, but also... done, but also not losing sight of what caused these issues in the past.
So is, I'm sorry, is, if you're not able to comment, I respect that, that's fine, but is the Albuquerque matter behind you from May of 2025?
Yes.
Okay, because the mayor, Tim Keller, ordered EZ Fiber to stop work on Wednesday. This was a May 12, 2025 article, filing a recent increase in complaints from city residents over property damages by workers laying fiber internet cables. And he's quoted as saying, unfortunately, the way this is being done, especially with some of these providers, is an absolute nightmare for our homeowners. And then that's quoting Albuquerque Mayor Tim Keller to the Albuquerque Journal. So what are you going to do differently here that didn't happen in Albuquerque?
So the resident communication of when we were coming into neighborhoods, we only had three touchpoints, whereas now we have nine. So that's first and foremost, because if people don't know we're coming, and also they see on Monday morning that we're, there's a big vermeil drill, that's caused, that's the biggest cause of complaints that the city had, was what are these people doing in my backyard? If you go and look at, if you go to slide 13, 14, 15, somewhere there, there's some of our, our new communication that we mail to residents. So we actually send them. It was a communication issue. It wasn't necessarily a construction issue. Now, are there open holes that are exposed that we barricade around if work happens on a Friday? We're not allowed to work on Saturday or Sunday, and we have to come back on a Monday. There are open holes, but they are barricaded to New Mexico law, and so we'll do the same thing here. What happens? Maybe track earlier, like 12. These are contractor magnets, so there was some, there were some violations from the contractors that they did not have our notification on some of their trucks or equipment. Additionally, the lollipop signs, these are signs that go in the front of neighborhoods that were saying that we're coming.
It says four inches by four inches.
Those are the lollipops that go in. We also have larger signs that are at the front of neighborhoods as well, saying that we're, I brought the construction, this starting. So each city, some cities have one, it's just where we're not allowed to put those in yards. We still keep them there in case that we are, because that's a very good measure of markers. You'll see, if you drive down your street, you've got these little signs that stick out.
Do you know how many people actually pay attention to them?
Or mailed letters, or door hangers, I have to say.
Leadwater service lines, where we are knocking on people's doors because they haven't responded to mailers, they're getting the service lines replaced for free under a statewide program, and you think they're going to pay attention to you? Seriously?
They do. So most of the time that happens, because we certainly get calls. Additionally, to the physical marketing, we also do social media marketing as well. So we're on the Fox News, the CNNs, the Instagrams, the Facebook, we have the paid advertising as well.
I have a quick, just one more question for Mary, if I may.
Yes.
Mary, is there, is there any type of bonding or any type of way that we can bond where there's a fund that if homeowners have damage and they're not
Good.
Not, not, so they're not having to swim upstream and, and, and go through the same process that seems to be happening in these other cities?
The Metro Act is very specific as to what money we can collect for what purpose, and I do not believe bonding is part of the act.
What about monies for damages they cause?
That could be part of our agreement, the license agreements that we will prepare and enter into with EZ Fiber. There's some of the parts of the agreements that I liked, and we're going to make sure are in ours, where there's a named, identified person who's local, that we can reach 24, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so that if there are these problems, we have a go-to person. One of the things, too, I don't think you guys have touched on, is one of the selling points, I should mention that we had a Zoom meeting for almost an hour about a lot of these issues. I was very concerned about the fact that this is going on every inch of the public right-of-way, and, and these guys know that I had these concerns, and said that this community is going to have these same concerns. One of the things that they touted, that you've not talked about yet, is the community outreach that you do for the benefit of the community is a moat. So you may want to talk about some of that as well. And then, and then also, if I can just say real quickly before he does that, I think, you know, the Metro Act tried to do some really great things for the state. It also did some challenging things for communities. So on some level, we make a choice that we give, we give the general permit, that's easy. It's what we allow after that, and we have to allow reasonable accessibility in order for companies to do their thing. The difficulty is if we say no because of the Metro Act, companies like EZ Fiber then can make the decision to take us to the Circuit Court and enforce us to do these things. So on some level, we have no choice, which I find extremely frustrating. On the other side of it, the best we can do is come up with the best license agreements that we can, which hold their feet to the fire, and make sure that the residents are happy every step of the way, or as happy as they can be. Also, too, I ask the question, how disruptive is this noise? So they're on a particular block for perhaps a week? Five days, four days, five days?
The most that a homeowner will be impacted by a drill on the street is about, is no more than two days. And that's, that's, keep in mind, that's 500 feet, so if they're going 500 feet, which is about, what, how many houses is that? So 70, 65-foot yard line, so about 11 houses, nine to 11 houses roughly. So every 500 feet, they can drill in roughly a day. So they won't be impacted that long. When we come in, we pull the fiber, that's another time where they actually, do they pull the, do they pull the fiber right in there?
No, they'll put the dock down and put the bolts in, and then they'll come back and place the fiber. And that usually happens pretty quickly.
And that, that's a hand-pulled, so that's, there's no actual machinery. So the, so the big vermeil drill, as you say, will be in their yard or down the street roughly 24 hours. And then from there, everything else is done by hand.
Not in their yards, on the city right-of-way?
Correct.
Unless they want to be connected?
Correct. And then once they call, that's when we'll come, actually, they'll dispatch a secondary crew to come out and actually dig, hand-dig the line until they have housed itself.
So one of the concerns we had is that the line is laid on one side of the street. So if a homeowner on the opposite side of the street wants the service, now they have to bring their line across, concerning about damaging any of the infrastructure. So again, that would be in our license agreements of how that's going to be handled and what would happen if they damaged any of our infrastructure. I've been told that they go far less deep than our infrastructure, because in Michigan, we have to have those deeper because of our temperatures.
Irrigation, landscape, lighting?
Yep.
Not for that.
Yep.
But that's.
Yeah. How do we repair the road? Because at that kind of depth, you heard an awful lot of conversation about a road. That lady at the back there is planning putting sewers in. How deep is that line going in for the sewers, Melissa? It's like eight feet down or something? And if you have to do an improved street repair, how deep do you go? For replacement, even? Roughly? Two feet, three feet? So we got to dig around those?
No, that's, that's when the city would force us to relocate our fiber.
Or tell us upfront how deep you want us to go?
Yeah.
When you're doing the permit review.
So there is a permit review, there will be the license agreements, and all of the engineering design will have to be approved by us as well. I don't think that, so far, I've heard that you have, that there's input from the city as to where these boxes go, but I intend to bake it to an agreement that we have some input with the engineering department where these large boxes go.
Yeah, those are permitted, those are permitted as well.
So all of these things that they have to do have to have the secondary permits, so that this, this permit is the easy part. It's everything that we do after that is going to take more direct effort and, and very careful scrutiny of the permits, the engineering, and the license agreements that we enter. And I think these guys already know I'm going to be a pain in their neck.
That's what we pay you for.
Of my communities. So, again, I find it frustrating what the Metro Act makes us do.
Yep.
But we're left with pretty much no choice other than saying, we're not going to do it, and then asking these guys, are you really going to sue us to make us do it?
No.
And I've had that conversation with some of the people in his office. There was a blink in the air, shall we say, when I asked that direct question.
A blink in the air?
So I asked the question, and nothing was responded.
Yeah, which means they'll sue us. So what is your timeframe? When would this work actually start?
So we're in the process of completing low-level design right now. We're in the process of, I think I saw the number yesterday, we've got 95,000 homes in the region in the low-level design process. Right now, we're permitted, we have a Metro Act permit in almost half a million homes right now. I would probably say that we would start early summer, late spring, but we'd start the permitting process much sooner than that. That is a, that's a very coordinated process. There's lots of back and forth. That process normally takes about 90 days from when we submit permits, until we get on the same page, and they're all approved, moving from there.
Commissioner Long, and then Commissioner Hague?
Just to, just to clarify, when the licensing part comes out, does, does that allow us to set parameters with regard to dealing with the damages that may result? And either having, you know, a set aside of money that can be dealt with with that? Because it seems to me that their problems are, is who they hire. You know, like, they may hire 10, 10 guy, 10 groups that are amazing, and they have the one or two that, you know, that aren't. And I think that's probably, probably part of their growing pains. But I, I, if it's possible, I would highly, highly encourage the city and, Mary, yourself as a city attorney, to bake in a call center while this is going on, a fun, a funding mechanism so that our residents are not forced to sue them in Circuit Court, or class actions in Circuit Court for damages to, to their property. And, and a Circuit Court action coming from the other way can also provide a resolution that provides those type of things. So I would encourage
We'll take a look at that.
Them to do that, yeah.
Don't know if it's possible, but I will take a look at it.
Okay.
Commissioner Hague?
Sir, in certain circumstances, obviously, in every city that we're required to have a bond, we'll certainly have a bond. I'd probably say that 99% of all cities require us to have a bond. Most bonds are between $75,000 to $100,000. Some of them are just at $5 million, but that's, that's extremely high. We're also open to opening an escrow account as well. So we're more than happy and willing to work at the city on whatever structure, whatever makes you guys feel comfortable to work.
All right. Commissioner Hague, you had a comment, and then Mayor Portemballer, and then, because we have no choice, I think we'll take this to a vote, because we have other items on the agenda.
Yeah, so you're private equity owned, right?
Yes, sir.
So you've been in, in business for four years? You said?
Yes, sir.
What's your expected spin-off timeframe? Is it next year? Because it's about the five-year time period where everybody wants their money back, because it's a 20% IRR on average.
I can't, I can't speak to what their motives are. I do know that we just were coming in with additional, quite a bit of money in capital from them, so I doubt that they would sell anytime soon if they just infused more capital with us.
Do you have permits with any other cities in Michigan yet?
We've got 34 other Metro Act permits that are approved.
They're approved in the state of Michigan?
Yes.
Are there any adjacent to us?
I can look at my computer and I can tell you, but they're all within the Detroit suburbs.
Okay. I'd be interested to see what your proposed business case is, because if I think about the providers here in Birmingham, we have AT&amp;T Fiber, Comcast, who are putting in fiber, Wide Open West, I know of at least one business running Starlink, there's T-Mobile 5G, Verizon 5G, and AT&amp;T. We have, as my colleague here said, around 8,000 homes. Your penetration is going to be a fraction of that.
If you look at, if you go to slide 22, we've done analysis on this. Here's our pricing for, for Michigan. So we are a symmetrical provider, so we're one gig by one gig and greater. So our one gig by one gig is $69. We've looked at Comcast, we've looked at WOW, we've also looked at AT&amp;T Fiber, and those are the prices that they have here. The only other symmetrical provider that's out there is AT&amp;T, and while they offer less than gig prices, that pricing is actually old pricing as of about six weeks ago, when that was, analysis was completed. Just last week, AT&amp;T announced a $10 increase to all of their, their base packages. So their 300 by 300 meg is now 67, 77 for the 500, the one gig is now $93. So while we're generally cheaper than everyone else, we price it to where it is affordable for everyone. And we also have, again, the no, the price time, sorry, the price for life, the no installation fee, no contract, so we separate ourselves and some of the intangibles as well, other than just price. But we are a gig provider, so we do not sell anything less than one gig. And that's one gig by one gig symmetrical.
One gig up, one gig down?
Yes, sir.
All right. Final comment? Final questions?
Well, he, he brought up what I, what I was thinking, and like, you know, you've, what, whether you're blanketing the area and you just came to us like you're coming to everybody else, or you've actually studied the demographics of Birmingham. If you've studied the Birmingham demographics, you know that we're highly educated, highly affluent, not super price sensitive, and like, you know, what are, like, what are you expecting? 5%? Maybe, maybe 10%?
Our investment thesis is more than that. So in the entire region, it's more than that.
Well, in the entire region, but so, but are you gonna, are you gonna fight? Are you gonna go at it with her over this, and us, and, you know, down the road for, for probably in Birmingham, a very, you know, you're not charged, there's a Birmingham premium for contractors. You're not, you're not, you're not hitting us with a premium.
In our most affluent areas of Houston, Albuquerque, Seattle, and Chicago, most of our resident, most of, most of the customers are buying either the five or the eight gig, and I will tell you, they're buying them at a clip that is greater than our investment thesis.
What do you do, what do you do with that bandwidth? I mean, 12 TVs? I mean, what?
Tell your kids.
It's ridiculous.
They can rot their brains on Roblox faster than they are today.
All right. Let's bring it back to the matter at hand. So if we've completed our questions and answers, and we're, we have no choice, and we're trusting in Ms. Kucherik to be as hard-nosed as possible for the defense of our easements and our residents' tranquility of life, I will ask Ms. Bingham for a roll call vote.
Is the motion in second?
Oh, excuse me, motion in second. That's true. We don't have one yet. I've got, lost track. Would someone like to make the motion? Nobody wants to, but would someone, would someone please make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Commissioner Emmerich?
I'd like to make a motion, make a resolution to approve the Metro Act application of EZ Fiber Texas LLC and the Metro Act permit for the project location shown on the exhibit. In addition, authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the bilateral form on behalf of the city, and to direct the city attorney to assure EZ Fiber's adherence to city ordinances and all other requirements to assure protection of city public property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Commissioner Emmerich, second. Commissioner Host, any comments on the motion?
I love being coerced into saying yes.
Yes. Ms. Bingham?
Commissioner Anthony Long?
No.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner, Mayor Portemballer?
No.
Mayor Therese Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
No.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
All right. 4-3, but only because we don't have a choice. Thank you, gentlemen. And as you, you need your presentation back, or?
No, it's emailed, but I will save it on the last slide as my contact information. All perspective, contact information as well. So if there's anything you need, Commissioner, I'm just saying.
Yeah. And, and, and the only thing that gives me some comfort is the fact that you understand that angry residents that angry residents are not going to buy your service. So we'll see. Moving on to new business E. We have a resolution to meet enclosed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section 8, Subportion 1E of the Open Meetings Act to discuss pending litigation. A roll call vote is required and the vote must be approved by two-thirds majority of the commission. We are going to deviate from our normal process. The commission is going to adjourn to closed session at this time because we have an attorney on hourly standby. And then we will return, reconvene to open session after the closed session for the purposes of completing the agenda items FG communications and reports. So we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion if I may. I'd like to make a motion to meet enclosed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section 8, 1E of the Open Meetings Act to discuss pending litigation entitled Yasmin Aziz et al. versus the City of Birmingham, Oakland County, case number 2024-206-496NZ. That is pending before the Honorable Phyllis C. McMillan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Bingham. Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Host.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Mayor Portenballer.
Yes.
Mr. Hague.
Yes.
All right, so we are convening to closed session now. We should be out for roughly 45 minutes or an hour. And then we will return to reconvene for open session to complete our agenda.
It is 12:05 a.m. We are being recorded. The City Commission is reconvening after closed session to open session. We move to New Business F, Commission Items for Future Discussion. Any Commission Items for Future Discussion? A motion would be required to bring up the item for future discussion at the next reasonable agenda. No discussion on the topic would happen tonight. I see none. Commission Discussion on Items from a Prior Meeting, we have none. Removed from Consent Agenda, we have already handled. Communications, we have five letters. We have a communication regarding 400 East Lincoln, communication regarding the planned park improvements of Poppleton Park, which are being handled at Parks and Rec tomorrow, communication regarding Arlington, or today I should say, communication regarding Arlington and Shirley, communication regarding a parking experience, and communication from Commissioner Host regarding infrastructure. Commissioner Reports. Do we have any Commissioner Reports? Commissioner Comments?
Hi, one. This is my last Commission meeting as I will not be at the November 10th meeting, which is the changeover of the Commission after the election. So I wanted to say to the residents, thank you for giving me the opportunity to sit here. Thank you to all of you for the camaraderie and deliberation, and I've learned a lot from everybody here. And thank you to the city staff for teaching me a lot along the way. And I will be pursuing more advocacy efforts within my profession of pediatrics. I think there is a call to duty right now within my profession of pediatrics, so anyway, that's...
And we would all, I think collectively and probably individually, like to thank you for your service. You are excellent commissioner, passionate, engaged, fun, relentlessly cheerful, and we are sorry to see you go.
Thank you.
And you already have your plaque.
I do.
Thank you, Alice. All right. Any other Commissioner Comments? All right. Advisory Boards, Committees, Commission Reports and Agendas. We have the Greenwood Cemetery Advisory Board Annual Report, which I'm sure you have already all perused. Legislation, City Staff. We have a memo about the advisability of keeping a non-resident on the Greenwood Cemetery Advisory Board, ordinance and membership, which states that even though it is possible at this point, the Greenwood Cemetery Advisory Board was not in favor of changing anything. So if the Commission would like to consider that, we would need to instigate action on our end at a later date. But the individual in question, Mr. Canal, is continuing to attend the meetings and participate as a citizen, which mitigates the damage at this point. So if there is nothing else, could we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.